Okay. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
First, let me say welcome back to all of our colleagues, our city council members, and also good to see all of our staff as we move forward in our work session for Monday, August the 4th. It's my understanding that Mayor Colvin will be a little bit late, but he is supposed to come. So we do have a quorum, and if we could, I would like to call our meeting to order. And let's ask Brother Davis. I haven't heard him in a while speak to the Lord. Could you do the invocation for us, please?
I speak to the Lord every day, but I'll let you hear it. So, Lord, we thank you for this time.
That's what I meant, sir.
We thank you for this time. We thank you for allowing us making it here safely. We thank you that people that are on their way here will make it arrive safely, and we ask that this meet will go smooth. Lord God, and let it go quick, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. The pledge of allegiance, please. Hey, ladies.
I pledge allegiance to the good Lord, the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, the one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, as we get ready to move forward, could I have a motion to approve the agenda, please? And then out.
Dr. Hare, I move that we top the agenda.
Okay, it's there, second row floor. Okay, Councilmember Benavente did the motion, and it was seconded by Councilwoman Banks-McBalfour. All in favor?
Doctor Hare, before we vote, did you want to ask the attorney about 6.05 and 6.06, what we were talking about before the work session started about making that action tonight instead of?
I'll wait till I get to it.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I'll wait till I get to it. Could I get a, our machines up to vote, please? Okay, that is six to zero. All right, our first item, I'll recall on the city manager that will start the introductions for us for today's meeting. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Dr. Hare, and welcome back, council. It seems like July has escaped us, and we're here in August. Was it quick or what? It was quick. Yes, sir, yes, sir. Happy to be joined today by Laura Smith, our emergency management manager coordinator, as well as she's brought some friends from the county, Mr. Crumpler and Ms. Scheck. And I'll ask Laura to come forward and tell us what we're going to be doing today, as well as provide further introductions. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Today, we're going to talk about emergency management and what that entails, and that think of me other than just a weather event. And my co-presenter today is going to be Gary Crumpler. He's the EM Coordinator/interim Director of Emergency Services at the county, and his EM planner, Amanda Scheck. Before we get started, and I get everything up and running, we do have a little interactive activity for you all to do. Amanda's going to pass out some monopoly money, and it's after budget season, so I do apologize I couldn't get the money to you prior to that, and that it's not actual funds. So up, up here behind me, we have various cups that are labeled with hazards that affect us in Cumberland County. What we would like for you to do is take your money and invest it in those threats or hazards that you think are most prevalent, or would, that you would like to put your money in, for Cumberland County and the city of Fayetteville.
I'm disappointed one thing I was looking for is not up there.
What are you looking for?
What is it?
Well, what do those things affect? So what, if you don't invest your money in those things?
It's going to affect all of them. I can take your money, sir.
I haven't gotten it yet, that's all.
Are we thinking really how much money?
Yes, ma'am.
You can save something to campaign.
I heard that. If that's the case, I would, I'd just put it in my pocket. Did you put yours up?
Yeah.
And this is what you picked up, right?
Does anyone have any money left? That's good, that's good. Okay, well, this was part of our interactive, well, this is our interactive activity, and while Mr. Crumpler and I present on emergency management, his planner, Amanda, will be calculating and see what we feel as though are the most important risks within the city of Fayetteville. Okay, I think we're just waiting on a little bit of a technical, there we go, okay. So, most of you know me, just to give you a little bit more background about myself, I am Laura Smith. I started in the world of public service as a telecommunicator with Cumberland County 911 in 2016. In December of 2018, I was promoted to a certified training officer, where I would train new dispatchers coming in on the call-taking process and dispatch process. And in 2021, a young budding supervisor, Mr. Crumpler, gave me a chance, and I became an EM planner with Cumberland County. And in March of last year, I joined you all at the city of Fayetteville. I have my Bachelor of Science from Western Carolina in disaster management, and I am currently enrolled at Clemson University and will graduate in May. That's why I left it up there with my MPA.
Good afternoon. My name is Gary Crumpler. I am the Cumberland County Emergency Manager, as well as the interim Emergency Services Director. Those of you that knew Gene Booth, he retired, so I'm filling in in his stead until they hire a permanent replacement. I started out in fire and EMS services as a volunteer firefighter at the age of 16 in the Grace Creek community, decided I wanted it to make it career. I've done career fire service at the town of Chapel Hill, as well as the city of Lummerton. I wanted to come back home and serve the community in which I grew up in. So I applied for a job as an EM planner shortly after, during the height of the COVID-19 pandemic, I got promoted to essentially the Emergency Management Coordinator. So all the stuff that you saw at the Crown, the vaccination, I helped plan that whole entire operation. So happy to be here and happy to present emergency management to you all this afternoon.
And I don't think Gary gives himself enough credit, because when he was organizing the COVID vaccination clinic, I heard him on a conference call, and he said, "What if we do it like a Chick-fil-A drive-through?" And I think that concept stuck. So for today's objectives, we are going to define the concept and scope of what emergency management is, identify common goals and objectives of emergency management programs, explain key laws and statutes relevant to emergency management, describe the responsibilities of elected officials during emergencies, we're going to summarize some executive orders, and we have already participated in our interactive activity. So what is emergency management? Defining a disaster in a community, a disaster is any event that causes significant disruption, harm, or destruction to a community. Anything that affects significantly your day-to-day life, that is a disaster. We do not limit those to weather-related incidents such as hurricanes, tornadoes, and floods. They do include public health emergencies, such as pandemics, technological failures, hazardous material spills, infrastructure failures, and acts of terrorism. Emergency management plans for a wide range of disasters to ensure resilience and preparedness. So what we do is, a lot of the times, we're behind a computer, but we're planning for what is to come. What type of resources may a agency need, will the fire department need, will the police department need? We operate through four phases of emergency management. Mitigation is reducing risk and preventing disasters before they happen. Preparedness is where we make our plans, we do training, and help responders ensure that they are equipped to prepare for a disaster. Response is the immediate actions we take to protect lives and property. And recovery is restoring the community and infrastructure post-disaster. And I'm glad that Ms. Alicia is going to be after me to talk about her watershed projects, because between mitigating those efforts and in the recovery phases, we, the city of Fayetteville's done a lot of work. Key goals and objectives that emergency management has is to minimize impact on people and property, ensure effective coordination and communication, provide timely and efficient disaster response, and support community resilience and long-term recovery. So how we do that is, we do operate on a web-based program called Web EOC. We also have access to the state Web EOC, where we can input resource requests if the city of Fayetteville or Cumberland County runs out of resources, or they're going to need something. And resources could be anything from a team of responders to cots for a shelter, blankets, it could be a shower trailer, a, somewhere for folks to wash clothes, anything is a So during an event, that is really how we communicate with each other and stay in contact, is constantly putting in updates with our partners, through our partners, into Web EOC, so everyone can see what's going on.
All right, so I'm going to talk about some of the general statutes, policies, and guidelines that apply to you as elected officials. The first one I'm going to talk about is North Carolina General Statute 166A, and that's known as the North Carolina Emergency Management Act. And what that outlines is, what authorities do you have as elected officials? What is covered under your states of emergency? Public assistance. Everybody hears the Stafford Act, which is the next item that we're going to talk about. So as soon as those disaster funds start rolling down, you hear, is it qualified, or is it eligible under the Stafford Act? So that covers multiple protective actions that you may, may be taking, like putting up barriers, buying emergency supplies for your fire departments, police departments. So usually, typically, that is covered under the Robert T. Stafford Act. The Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000, so I have this highlighted, because it is probably, as far as mitigation goes, the most important thing to you as an elected official. And that states that every jurisdiction has to have a hazard mitigation plan. Your hazard mitigation plan outlines mitigation measures that you, as a jurisdiction, will take to lessen the impact of a disaster. So all the things that Ms. Alicia does with the watershed program, if you want to buy generators for your senior centers or recreations to prepare for disasters, anything that would help you mitigate the impacts of a disaster has to be cited in your hazard mitigation plan, or, or at least with the last administration, you don't qualify for it. The good thing about the hazard mitigation plan is, it's a living document. It can always be changed, you can filter your, your request as a jurisdiction, as a council, through Laura, and we can work with the state mitigation officer to amend your section of the hazard mitigation plan. And that can be done from the time that it's adopted, to the time that we begin a new process to do it. So our hazard mitigation plan is actually up for renewal, actually now, we should be starting the planning process. So I encourage you to send your planning directors, watershed, anybody who has a stake in your mitigation efforts, they should be at that meeting. That way, your innovative strategies, like your green technology, anything that you want to implement, can be contained within that plan. Another thing that we handle in emergency management, have you all heard of the LEPC, the Local Emergency Planning Committee? So that states that, under the Community Right to Know Act, that if you have a facility within your jurisdiction that is making hazardous materials, that you have the right to know what they are producing. Now, there are a few limiting parameters, like if something's a trade secret, and they use a special formula to create a product, they don't have to necessarily give you that, but the individual products that they use to make that, they have to release that to the public. Now, I know some of you may be asking, "Well, what about Gen X? How, how come we didn't know that beforehand?" Well, Gen X is produced by DuPont. DuPont falls technically within Bladen County. Bladen County, their LEPC is responsible for that information, and it does not fall under Cumberland County's jurisdiction. Price Anderson Act, how many of you knew that we fall within the Injections Pathway Zone for the Sharon Harris Nuclear Plant? Yep. So if there is a nuclear disaster, the Robert T. Stafford Act does not cover it. It's the Price Anderson Act that does that. Cumberland County Code of Ordinances, and of course, you as a municipality have your own municipal code that you abide by whenever it comes to emergencies. So the responsibility of county government. So by general statute, we have to coordinate emergency management activities, meaning that we have a staffed emergency management program, and that we are ultimately responsible for all nine jurisdictions. We have to establish a local emergency management agency, we kind of just hit on that, and then the county is responsible for declaring states of emergency. Now, here recently, I know there's been a lot more coordination, at least with the county and the city, about coordinating our states of emergencies to make sure that they align with one another. But of course, the city could declare a state of emergency all on your own. You don't have to rely on the county. You could operate as an individual jurisdiction. So underneath our responsibilities, we coordinate with other jurisdictions and agencies. So every, before it's all said and done, I think I have a call from at least a couple elected officials from each agency, either through reaching out to me directly, or through Laura as your emergency manager, which is good. We encourage you to ask questions about the disaster and what steps that we're taking next. As far as the town and the municipal responsibility, it looks the same, pretty much, as the county. As a city, you can establish your own emergency management agency, which I applaud. A lot of bigger municipalities, that's what they're doing. Apex, city of Fayetteville, they all have their own emergency managers that's responsible for looking at you at a jurisdictional level. And then her responsibility is a lot the same. She has the responsibility to coordinate with me as the county emergency management director, and then relay any states of emergency y'all declare as a jurisdiction. So, couple of questions for you, there's three. When should my jurisdiction declare a state of emergency? Anybody? All right, so I'll leave it open-ended and let you ponder on it.
Well, now there's a disaster.
Okay. So, when should my jurisdiction declare a state of emergency? And I'll just leave these open-ended for you. What powers does a state of emergency give a local jurisdiction? And then, do you know the city's process for y'all to declare a state of emergency?
Yes, yes. You know that.
Whenever we hear, even local, we can hear the alarms, I've always wondered where they came from. I, I've been giving it to Fayetteville State all this time, when I hear that message that goes out, but I'm not sure. But whenever we hear the alarms of something, or we get, we receive the messages on our cellphone, or whenever we see it trickling across the bottom of our screens on the television, is that our signal, our municipal signal to start doing whatever it is that we do, or is it that our municipal folk that are working for us know this just as soon as we do, or maybe before?
So whenever a disaster is, we know a disaster's coming, so right now, we know that there's two systems sitting off the coast of North Carolina that we're watching closely.
Yes.
So, right now, me and Laura, as well as our other first responders in our area, we're already communicating about the potential impacts of these storms. That's where our planning efforts start. What you're referring to, as far as your phone notification, that's what we call Cumberland Alerts, or you may receive it directly from the National Weather Service, it just depends. So the Cumberland Alert system is our mass notification system for Cumberland County, and in the backside of it, we have a direct link to the National Weather Service. So every time that you get a call that says, "Please stand by for a message from Cumberland Alerts," that was my best impression, I, I can't do it. That is data being pushed directly from the National Weather Service to our Cumberland Alert system, and then out to you as a subscriber of Cumberland Alerts.
Just to expand on that a little bit, whenever you sign up for Cumberland Alerts, whatever address you put in, if it corresponds with the geo-fenced area that the Weather Service is uploading into the system, that is who will get the alert. Not all of Cumberland County is going to get the alert, especially if you haven't signed up. But if you're in that, if your address is in that location, you will get it. You can put multiple addresses in, you can put your work location, your home address, if you have relatives and you want to track something going on with them, you can absolutely do that.
So, Councilmember Hare, I might have misheard what you were asking. Were you asking about how we would find it out, or how?
No, they, they asked the question, and I was responding.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
I was responding to that question.
So, so the.
They asked those questions.
Okay, so you're good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, okay. And what I was going to say is, like, when the Cumberland, before we had Cumberland Alerts and we had the hurricanes, everybody seemed to get to sign up for it. And, I'm sorry, I didn't see that, I'm sorry. We didn't see it, but as a council, what would happen is, the alerts would go out, and then the city manager would send something out to us and say, "This is getting ready to come down the pipeline," or they would send to the city manager, we would get it, so when the alerts came, we could tell our constituents what was going on.
Right.
I apologize, I didn't have this on. Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Phil Tim. I have a question pertaining to disasters you was talking about, in reference to the fire department. Chief Dove, you don't have to get up, because I'm going to mainly address the city manager. And as I see other communities have things that we don't have, I always ask the question, "How come we don't have it?" And Raleigh has a vehicle where the fire department gets to change their uniforms after being into a fire, so they're not susceptible to the chemicals of the fire. So I asked your protege, Shake Shaft, "How come we don't have it?" And he said, "Well, the city manager already approved something years ago, where we have the washing machines inside the departments to wash the chemicals out, let them air dry, so they could use them for the next cycle when they have to go back out," which is no more than maybe two a day max. But if we have a disaster, i.e. like we had in 9/11, maybe a lot of the reasons why we lost so many firefighters after the fact was because they had to stay in that uniform for so long. So if we have a disaster, are you telling us now that maybe we need to have more? So if we have a disaster, are you telling us now that maybe we need to have more than one uniform? For them to be able to change it? Because for them to wash the uniform that they have, and for them to get them two days for it to dry out, they won't be able to fight our disasters? We have a second set of uniforms?
Yes, sir. They, that was one of the first things that, and then we went and got the extractors and to wash them. But anytime you invite the fire department or my, my, my.
Well, he told me not to. We, every firefighter has a second set of gear. I think that was 2015. You all approved that. And we also have a plethora of gear in the logistics building in case some is damaged beyond repair or something like that. Our firefighters are well taken care of when it comes to that.
That's what I need to hear. Thank you, Chief. And we do have those washing machines in every fire department.
Can I jump back in as well? Can I move up? Thank you, Chief. I want to jump back up as well. Some council members, how many of you have been here when we've had a major hurricane? As a council member, where you were on staff as a major?
Okay.
And so, of course, Mayor Protem and Dr. Hare. And so one of the reasons we have this is wanting you to see beyond just the emails that I forward from Laura, but also see the teamwork between the city and the county. I think a more appropriate question may be, not only about a state of emergency, but to ask, when would we issue a state of emergency? What would necessitate? And some of the ideas that you saw could be what, where you put your money at in the various buckets. So if we had a terrorist event that impacted the main gates of Fort Bragg, that may be something that the mayor, because it would impact the traffic coming and going. If it were, of course, we had another tornado as we had out off of, was that Yadkin Road? It may be when we were going from Ramsey Street all the way to the river, warning people that we were expecting flooding from the river. Now, that was something that we had never really experienced before in my lifetime that we thought we were going to have. Thankfully, we didn't have it. If we have an act where our major water treatment plant or distribution plant goes offline and we've got to ration fuel. But essentially, it is, a state of emergency could be issued by the mayor or I guess by resolution of council members as well, or Mayor Protem or Designee. And that's very well spelled out by the city attorney. And that's also pulled together by the clerk's office. We prepare those in advance with Laura as well to issue those states of emergency. But that is whenever the social, economic, or safety of our community is at risk and there could be major disruptions to how we do things. And it gives us additional powers to act fairly quickly. It also triggers off, where's my Tiffany? Tiffany, as well as, and Tiffany as well, our finance, Chief Financial Officer, to allow us, as necessary, to begin emergency procurement and other things like that. It also sets up the stage for Gary and Laura to also start asking for additional resources. And as he said, to start tracking our expenses, hopefully for reimbursement if it were to come. But it is probably one of the most significant superpowers that the person serving as mayor of the council has, is to basically tell folks, not just that you have a curfew, but you have, you're restricted, could potentially restrict their movements. The governor, of course, has it when he starts talking about price gouging. And that was always an issue as well. But I mean, so the state, the state of emergency is, is a big deal. And sadly, these hurricanes are coming at a greater intensity. Who would have thought that the trouble they had with an ashfall? I mean, just never thought that would happen. Or what they had most recently in Durham and Hillsborough, places like that. So I think that may help answer some of what you had on the slide for Councilmember Dr. Hare or Mayor Protem, who've been through some of that as well. But it can be some fairly significant things.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to follow up on one more point. Because Councilmember Hare made me think of this question when he was talking about notifications. Most times when you have these disasters, all of the phones are down and communication lines are down. And he was talking about the sirens to let people notify. But if we don't have that in your part of the neighborhood, how are the citizens notified that a disaster is on the way? Or fast approaching, or here?
So right now, we, we try to go through a few different mediums. So always there's social media, but to your point, if the phones are down, then social media may not work unless they have hardline internet. We have Cumberland Alerts. We do pushes through leaflets. So especially downtown where you have people experiencing homelessness, we send our PIOs down there. They give them leaflets about what shelters are available. Am I missing anything? Oh, yeah, radio's a big one. So AM, FM radio, we have partnerships there. And then, of course, you can receive all the information that you need off your NOAA weather radio, if you have one of those. So right now, that's what we're using. And I, I suspect that may be related to the disaster that happened in Texas. Okay.
I had emailed, or I had a conversation with the city manager about what precautions we're taking in case some of that was to come, happen in Fayetteville.
So coincidentally, and Laura may be able to speak on the stream gauge or Miss Alicia. During Hurricane Matthew in Florence, our stream gauge coverage was very little in this county. Since then, the City of Fayetteville, North Carolina Emergency Management, NCGS, and as well as the county, most recently, we've done significant work on that front in installing additional stream gauges. That, those string gauges are linked to a program called NC-FIAMAN. The NC-FIAMAN system allows you to set up different profiles. So if you live near a dam, a high-hazard dam or something like that, that has, that's monitored, then you can, in your profile, select, I want to be alerted whenever this gauge reaches this stage. And that allows you to pre-plan. What happened in Texas was extreme amount of water in a very short duration. Not to say that that can't happen here too, because after a event where it's flooded or rained for several days and then we have a system come in like they did, the very same thing could happen. So a, as a community, as a county, we've been working to increase the amount of detection devices that we have in our community. Now, the next step is to get some of those audible alarms up. That way, if something like that happens here where you have no cell phone access, then that's another means of alerting. And it's like clockwork because Chairman Deverrier just requested the same presentation probably two weeks ago.
Well, Matt, we're all thinking alike. Let me just follow up on one more question. And so the cuts in federal funding is not going to affect the county or the city?
That's one of my questions, sir.
When it comes to notifications of these disasters?
So yes and no. So on the county side, we get funding called Emergency Management Performance Grant Funds. A large, or at least a portion of that money, goes towards the mass notification system. Right now, with the federal cuts and spending, so last year, they told us that we typically receive two checks a year, a larger check and then a smaller check. The larger check typically goes towards that emergency alerting funding. They told us last year that we, they were going to cut the smaller check and we would only receive the larger check. But here's the thing, with the new administration, we have not received that notice of funding for the larger check. And the state does not know if we're going to get it or not. So our emergency alerting system, the, if we don't get the funding, it'll be paid out of general fund. It'll, it'll have to be. We, we can't risk citizen safety for that.
Just to touch a little bit more on the devastation in Texas. Prior to my leaving the county and after Matthew in Florence, into Cumberland Alerts, every PWC-owned dam, every city-owned dam, those geo-shaped files are uploaded into the system. We worked with Stormwater last year to send out letters to all of the residents to sign up for Cumberland Alerts so that we could geo-fence an area if they were to have a dam failure.
Yeah, it was, yeah. And, and thank you. And I hate to, I'm just shaking my head because that was one of my questions that my colleague to my right just asked about the federal, any shortages in that funding. And I still can't, can't quite understand our top administration when it comes, it's as if there, everything is being pushed to the states across the board on a number of things, on how, you know, as far as funding go. So he, you, you answered one of my questions. So my other question was, you stated something, and I thought you said about generators. And I may not have heard that word, but I will ask that because when the power does go out, sometimes on my side of town, I'm probably 100, 200 feet from in the rear yard to Fire Station 4. And when I see that, hear that it goes out, I can hear that kick in back there. I said, that's the generators. You stated something about having or getting funding for like, I don't know if you said the rec centers. If you didn't, I'm saying it, but I thought I heard you say that. Is that something we need to look at just in case we have disasters where we want to move people to our rec centers for, you know, sleeping, or you know, whatever the case may be? If, if they do not have generators there to keep the power on, do all of our recreation centers and health centers have backup generators?
Yeah, well, he had a response to that. Mr. Hill can answer that. I remember we had some discussion on that some years back that Mr. Hill will tell you about.
So Mr. Gibson is probably tired of hearing from me by now. But me and him work very closely with the, the shelters that we use as primary shelters. I know recently, the city was allocated some, some funding to purchase some grant, or to purchase some generators. Was it Kiwanis that y'all got? Okay, so, so those, so the county-
So are you meaning, before, so are you meaning those, the, the smaller set? Because I have one in my home for, for this issue. Or are you talking about an overall generator that kicks in, fires up the whole system?
We're talking about a large generator with a switch. Yes, sir. So we, we make sure that we have shelters taken care of and all, we kind of break the county into quadrants. If you look at I-95 and Highway 24 as an intersecting line. So we make sure we have at least one shelter in every one of those quadrants initially. And then based off impact, we spread them out.
So let me back this question up because you said something, and I mentioned it earlier. So this is just our main recreation, recreation centers that we use as shelters? Not all of our rec cen, okay.
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Hill, you have something to add to that?
No, that was it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you all. Council, any other questions? All right, we thank you. Hope we don't need your services anytime soon.
Thanks, guys.
Well-
I'll count out the-
Do you want to count out the, give it the results?
Oh. Is this it? Oh, we got to have it, got to have the money.
Yeah, you missed that.
Make sure I don't screw it up this time. Which side is?
I definitely didn't hit about the money.
All right, so whether you know it or not, you just completed a threats assessment for the City of Fayetteville on at least elected officials' level. So your number one hazard that y'all want to invest in is dam failure. Number two is inland, inland flooding. And then number three is hurricanes. So we appreciate your time and-
And y'all will send us something formally to, to capture that?
Yes.
Absolutely.
If anyone gets the other one, we'll send it out to you. Thank you. You have your funds. Sir, may I have your funds under your phone?
Oh, is that what this is about? I see that, okay. I was in here playing something else, okay. All right, all right. So council will move on to 6.02, Cross Creek, Channel Improvements.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. How's everybody today?
Good.
Okay, I'm always challenged by starting. So I'm Alicia Lanier. I'm managing the watershed program. And Matthew Jones is here with Hazen Sawyer. And he'll be giving, thank you, Matthew, technical support and going through the, the details of the project. So Cross Creek Channel Improvements, Preliminary Design Scope of Services. We really appreciate this opportunity to share this scope of services with you. When this project is fully completed, and I'm glad that flooding was at least number two on our threats assessment for you guys, it, it will be the watershed program's highest impact project. The project's going to have a high cost, is, is going to span phased over a long period, maybe 10 years. And we'll, we'll get into that. Right now, today, this is the first step in the design process that we're, we're going to review and ask for your approval. And what this is going to require is collaboration across all the city departments, with the county, all of our master planning and other visions for the Cross Creek corridor. And by moving this project forward, we're going to ensure that we are strategically mitigating flooding while working together to improve and enhance the downtown Cross Creek corridor. So I'll just give a brief overview, try not to spend too much time on, on some of the details that y'all have already, that you have already heard. Give a brief overview of the Cross Creek watershed. And then Matthew will present the scope of work for preliminary design, which we're taking and considering to be 15% design. And then our overall request is consensus to proceed with this preliminary design scope of work. So you really appreciate all the dedicated commitments that we've experienced and the support we've gotten to date. We're up to over $1.1 billion in identified need cost for mitigating flooding. And we haven't even finished all the watersheds studies to date. And, and did want to let you guys know that we are, you've approved proposed solutions moving into the capital improvement program. And we are prioritizing those and moving forward with designs on much smaller projects. So I'm going to turn it over to Matthew.
Thanks, Alicia. A pleasure to be with you all this afternoon. So this is just a brief history of, this is not the first time that we've talked about Cross Creek. We started that watershed study in 2022. About a year later, in September, we presented kind of our initial draft of some of the proposed solutions throughout the watershed. Again, an update on those in the, in the, in May. And then in June of this year, presented the final deliverables. And then we're here today, as Alicia said, to talk specifically about one of the projects that came out of that watershed master plan, the Cross Creek Channel Improvements. So you all have seen this information before, but this is just one of many proposed solutions throughout the watershed. But as Alicia mentioned, it is the one that is the most impactful in terms of existing flooding concerns. And what are we generally talking about? So we looked at an array of options for what could be done to address the flooding along Cross Creek, particularly this downtown corridor. When we looked at the, those options, the most promising option was this channel improvement concept. So this is a generic representation of what that would look like. And it generally involves enlarging the channel through this corridor to handle, to convey various flood events. It's a significant project in its nature, and that's why Alicia mentioned, that's why we're approaching it in this way, starting with an initial design. This is not where we go through and do a detailed design and build it in a couple of years. But it's important that if the city wants to embark on this process, to start with initial design, understand what that is and kind of set that, that path forward so you can take an informed next steps on what that might look like. Through the watershed plan, we did do some preliminary assessments of what that would look like. And here's an example of that. You can see during a 10-year storm event, the blue shading shows the extent of flooding that we see along this corridor. And we've seen, you know, that even recently with Tropical Storm Debbie, not too long ago, you know, significant flooding along this corridor. This channel improvement concept would generally make the 10-year storm, or a storm that has, you know, about 10% chance of occurring in any given year, look more like a two-year storm event. So significantly reducing the footprint of flooding. And then similarly, for our larger storm event, something like a 100-year storm event, implementation of this project would make that more similar to a 10-year storm. So a significant reduction in the depth and the footprint of flooding through this downtown area. So we prepared a preliminary design scope of services. So we prepared a, a preliminary design scope of services. I'll touch briefly on, uh, that scope. Uh, I don't have a fun activity, uh, like the prior group, but we do have a bit of a choose your own adventure that we can get into more detail if you are interested in hearing more detail. But at a high level, uh, so we're collecting some additional survey information, really understanding uh, the details of the channel geometry, existing structures and constraints along this corridor. Doing a literature review and understanding the environmental constraints. Uh, so this corridor has, uh, you know, a long history of development and uses, uh, the individual properties used for a variety of purposes. So the purpose of this assessment is to understand where there are potential risks or concerns, things that could derail the project or significantly affect the cost of the project at a later date if we did not know those. Doing an alternative analysis, so generally looking at three different options of what could be done to improve the channel along this corridor. What we did as part of the watershed master plan was a very generic kind of channel cross-section. And so looking at more nuance to, you know, where would the channel actually be located? What is the extent of the improvement? And how might that project be broken out into different phases? And then getting into preliminary design, uh, that includes, uh, significant stakeholder outreach. That's something that we've already done, so we've had several meetings, uh, with other city departments to develop this scope, just to understand that this is a project uh, that could affect, uh, both a lot in the community, but also within the city. And getting that input, both to shape the scope, but to understand what that might look like in terms of future design. And that could be considering, you know, greenway options, park facilities, um, transportation, all those various needs that the city has. Want to understand those, so we can clearly articulate those and consider those as part of this preliminary design. And as Alicia mentioned, that end result would be something that we would call like a fifteen percent design plan. So not something that you're able to then take quickly into construction, but you understand what are those big opportunities, what are those big constraints, and can then set, uh, in motion to plan out those future design activities, uh, look at funding, look at grant opportunities. Uh, right now, we have kind of a high-level concept, and this would take it a significant step forward, uh, so that you could pursue, uh, those, uh, specific items. And then, of course, wrapping all it up in a preliminary design report. So like I mentioned, we can pause there and answer any questions, or if y'all would like more detail, we can, we can flip through some other slides.
All right, we have a couple of questions. Mayor Pro Tim Jensen, Councilman Maher, and I had a question as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have just one question to round it all out. This has kind of been talked about over and over and over through the decades, and it, and I'm trying to figure out if it's the same thing. At one point, you know, it was talked about to make this like the River Walk in down- San Antonio. Is this basically what we're talking about?
So, so that's, uh, I mean, among the alternatives that we are considering. So it, it would significantly change the geometry of the creek. And, um, one of the things that we would like to out, outline as part of this is, you know, there's an option where you just focus on the flood reduction and the hydrology and hydrologics of what's needed, or you could tie in additional community amenities. But this is, this is, this is that.
The, the reason why I'm asking the question is, I mean, this is a pivotal time that we say yes, or we say we're gonna put a Band-Aid on it. And this has been talked about for over fifty years. And I'm sure if we went to any closet, there would probably be a study that was shown. I know there was a group that even went down there. So I think as we're discussing that, we need to look at that.
Yeah, I will, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up because it was interesting as we were having some, uh, coordination with other city staff as part of developing the scope, uh, someone brought a report from the seventies-
Yes.
-that talked about this, you know, now, it was done differently from how we would do it now, but it was cutting a new channel, uh, through the downtown area.
Just like the one in, um, San Antonio and how the development is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilman Maher.
And did that, how did that work out, that new channel?
In, you're talking about the one in San Antonio? So there are a number of cities that have, uh, undertaken, uh, concepts similar to this. Um, and they all, all vary, and that's one of the things we're gonna look at, the alternatives is-
And you said they all vary as for success or not?
So I think the scale, so like what we're proposing to do here is not an exact replica of like what is in San Antonio. But a key consideration here and a key driver in many of these other places has been not only to address existing concerns about funding, but to spur economic development by having an area that's more inviting and kind of developed with that in mind.
Then what my question is, probably back in the late nineties, we had a major flood. And right there in the filter plant area back to, to town, at least up to the Rowan Street, the creek that's there that feeds into the Cape Fear, they opened it up, okay, they made it wider. And help me with the word, I may say the word wrong, uh, they mar- marander it?
Meandered.
Meander it, okay, where, you know, they kind of curved it to slow the flow of water down. I don't know if enough of that was done. I never really saw the, the positive suc- It could have been if it's a little rain, but when we've had the major, I had never really saw the the, the great success. And what my, so is there successes whenever you kind of marander it and opened it up other, along with putting in some storm drain?
Yeah.
Systems?
So it's a great question. So essentially what we are proposing to do, here's a larger version of that cross-section. Creeks naturally want to spread out onto a flood plain during a large storm event. That's, that's what they do. The problem here is that that flood plain is downtown Fayetteville. And so really what we are looking to do is to change that geometry, so we build in a flood plain that is defined, um, and has that space during those larger storm events. You've got the physical area and volume for that flow, uh, to spread across. Now, we do it, I brought this up, so what's interesting to note is there's very little, for, for Cross Creek, very little flooding issues downstream of Green Street. And that's because the channel is much larger there. But it, that was done through a variety of ways, some natural, some otherwise. That's not specifically what we're proposing to do here. You can see the photo on the right, like a lot of riprap, a lot of concrete. We're looking at more nature-based solutions, uh, for this corridor, uh, but doing it in a, in a defined, uh, way, so that we've got that flood plain space. But essentially the areas that flood are the areas that we want to flood, and the areas that are developed, uh, would, would not be subject to that flood.
And, 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 and thank you. The, my, my only concern is whichever direction that we're gonna go or propose or to increase it, is that we've, we've done, started doing that back at that time. And I, I never saw the, I never saw the change of improvements with the major floods. Now, that's could have been one of them five hundred year, one hundred year, whatever it was back at that time. But it was terrible. And I remember because it was like that, the council then had this same discussion to change that up, and I just never really saw the success of it. Maybe it's more needs to be done.
Yeah, so, I mean, we've done a lot of analysis onto this, to this point. A big point regarding the timeline that I failed to mention, but, but you're talking about that reminded me. A big part of this effort is to know what the solution would look like in enough detail, such as you could plan for it moving forward, or at least be aware. This is not to say that the, that the city is deciding today to construct this project. But it's helpful, I mean, a key objective here is that we know specifically what that would look like to inform, I guess, the council, city staff and others, that if you've got a project that's coming up a few years down the road, there are things that could happen that could make a project like this much harder to do in the future. And so understanding what was to be involved in this, uh, project, so things could be more intentional about that moving forward. And I, I think also to your point, better understand the details. We've done a lot of modeling assessment here, but really getting into more detail to have more confidence on what the outcome would be.
All right, so, um, did have a question before I go to, uh, Councilmember Mahendros and Thompson. So I think you said a, a, a key part there that, you know, forward planning would help us avoid delay and also overspending, that some other projects down the line could impact where we're going with this. So key decision is if you wanted more amenity-based to where you're gonna open up extra, um, options for economic development or, or other things. Or if you just want to fix the problem, is that?
That's part of the consideration in the alternatives.
So, so based on your experience, I'm not asking for specifics, just ballpark stuff. A project like this, if council said we want to move forward, give us a timeline that, you know, you could get a design that you could have concepts within what? And last part of that is, once you have that, depending on, you know, which direction to go, whether it's more amenity-based or not, ballpark projects like this, what have you seen the timeline look like? Cost.
Oh, cost? Um, so, so starting with the timeline-
Not holding you to a number.
Yeah, yeah. So starting with the timeline, um, we, this scope that we're presenting here today is an eleventh month, eleven-month schedule. So identifying those alternatives, preparing that preliminary design is all within the next-
Gets it to fifteen percent?
That's correct, so eleven months. Overall, if you were to then kind of continue to step forward and kind of move towards construction, you're probably talking on something on the order of like a ten-year timeframe, uh, to implement that. You're gonna go through, you would advance the design, property acquisition would be, likely be part of that process, and so those different things, uh, will take some time. So I think, just in, in a general sense, could you start building things sooner within that timeframe? Yes, but I would use kind of a ten-year timeframe as kind of a rule of thumb. Cost-wise, um, uh, initial estimates, we're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty million dollars. That, there's a lot of leeway in that. If you want to keep it just really simple, um, if you want to incorporate a lot of additional amenities, I mean, it could be higher than-
But you have ten years to, to develop and find funding sources and-
And that's part of the reason here of why we're not proposing to kind of carry it farther than the fifteen percent. That fifteen percent will provide a much better illustration of what are the options, and then you can kind of decide where to go from there. And, and part of that is that there are opportunities to phase this project. So there may be a specific reach that you'd want to do first at a significantly lower cost. But again, it's helpful to know how that may sequence out in the future.
And the final part, I'll say, council, today we, we experienced the ribbon cutting of a portion of the, uh, the river trail, which when we were elected a while ago, we were funding this river trail in sections. And so, you know, you, projects like this take sometimes a decade or more to do it, and you can plan for it. But just keep that in mind as we try to get to a consensus today. Councilman Mahendros?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, question for either, um, Assistant Director Reeves or Ms. Sheila, maybe, I mean, Alicia. The, um, you mentioned the watershed studies. Do we have a cost to date of those watershed studies? And then I know they're not a hundred percent complete, but out of the fifteen or so watersheds, how many have we completed? Or what's the percentage of completion of those watershed studies?
Yeah, we, we've, we've, uh, completed eight of them. And we are currently working, uh, well, we're working on the, the rest of them. So we've got fifteen watersheds. We have spent, um, it's a twenty-one million for the studies, associated survey that we needed to do the modeling work. We're doing, uh, saving quite a bit of money by doing three of the watershed studies in-house. These are smaller, simpler watershed studies, but we have on, on staff, we've got modeler, um, modelers to do that. Did you have another question, Councilman?
Well, yeah, now I do. So we've spent about twenty-one million so far on those watershed studies between survey and modeling.
Oh, oh, and developing proposed solutions, so the whole, what, what y'all have seen is, is-
Solutions.
Yeah, we have, we have proposed solutions for all of those watershed studies that we've completed. And we're also bringing proposed solutions as we're, as they're developed, we're bringing them before we finalize reports. So, um, I don't remember the exact dates, but in October, you're gonna see us a lot again with proposed solutions, and then again with some final deliverables. Uh, and we're adding those proposed solutions to our capital improvement program. And already started prioritizing those and, um, with Byron and the CIP team, selecting projects for design and construction.
Yes, at its inception, um, I think it was like a two to three-year timeline to get the, um, watershed studies complete, and it was gonna be like a five to ten million dollar total project. Now, I don't think that included the proposed solutions, but do we have a, um, estimated time to complete the other seven, um, watersheds? And-
Yeah.
At a future date, I'd like to get a breakdown of what, what's been spent and what we will need to complete those seven.
Yeah, like I said, we, we are already, uh, working on, uh, we've, we're developing proposed solutions for two other watersheds. We just kicked off. Uh, we're kicking off three watersheds next week, watershed studies. And we, uh, are bringing final deliverables for another two watershed studies. So I can, we can put that together easily. I don't have all those figures right at my fingertips. I, I do know when I first started and I came in about a year and a half after the project had started, uh, the beginning amount was thirteen million and our target was to try to finish in five years. And I think that what we're seeing is we're, well, we're just coming up with some really big proposed solutions and, and the concepts like this. You know, we, we've, um, yeah, they're adding to, to our time.
All right, Councilwoman Benavente.
Thank you, Mayor Coleman. Thinking back to a time when y'all's staff visited out Echols Park, and it culminated in essentially these top ten of incredibly viable, um, projects that if and when, we can sort of connect them and plug them to some funding opportunities, not in any particular rank order, that we'll be able to move forward. Whether it's federal, whether it's state monies, is there any sort of just general commentary y'all can share on that? Because I can imagine right now, it, it's, it's probably, the forecast is, is, is difficult to say, to speak to. But just any, any sort of, uh, feedback that you can share. I know that community members are really interested.
Yeah, that, that's a, that's a great question. So, uh, I'm in contact with, um, Power Up, who represent the community, and I, I've invited them to just, whenever they don't hear anything from us, feel free to ping, ping me-
That's awesome.
And I can give them an update. Where we're at now is we have, we have the Echols Park project as part of our, uh, projects that we are, um, scanning for funding. But the one, you know, some of that community funding that was available, community environmental funding that was available last year, we haven't seen it this year. Uh, but we're working closely with the community, and I'm, I'm just giving them an update.
Yeah, no, I think that means a lot.
So we haven't dropped it.
No, I, I believe that. I think it means a lot that you're keeping up with folks. Sometimes the anxiety is just around the unknown. So I think that's, I really appreciate you guys are willing to, to, to stay, um, in contact with them. Is there ever a world where we start to consider other means of funding some of these projects? Or are they, are the, are the numbers just so large that we kind of have to rely on the trickle-down from the feds or the states?
Byron may, may be a better person to answer this than, than I am. I know that we've got the enterprise funds and we've got, um, you know, uh, Byron? You want to speak to this? Because this is all about funding.
I'll try.
Well, Byron, um, so the question, I think, sir, was, um, how do we, um, attack funding for this?
Well, in, in particular, because I think, you know, we don't have a lot of direct control over what happens in Washington or Raleigh necessarily. And so if the climate continues, um, to be dry when it comes to those opportunities like that, I guess, used to exist, at what point do we say, let's think of some alternatives, even if we're not able to do all of it, and certainly if it comes, then we'll stop. But is there a certain point where we start to consider, um, alternate means? I don't know if we're talking bonds, I don't know if we're talking other means of executing, uh, enterprise funds.
Right, well, I think that the time is now. I think you've hit it square on the head in this presentation, the last one as well. And conversations I know that the mayor's having with delegation members as well, what the federal government at the moment is saying to the states is that, um, uh, you have a local problem, you have local solutions and funding. And that there cannot be given the wide range of, from wildfires on the West Coast to flooding along in Texas, flooding in the mountains, hurricanes, unknown global pandemics. It literally is, there is not a way that the government can be all things to all folks. Um, and so they're asking us through, uh, the efforts that you have done and past councils have done, such as through smart development. The water goes where the water has always gone, and we're trying to have to learn to live with it to a certain extent. But as, uh, the mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and others have talked about, is there a way that you can build an amenity around it so that when it's not flooded or it's not a danger, um, that it could still be something that is very attractive? We saw that this morning. As you know, um, if you were just driving, um, on the, on the lugator, if you look down and look at the river basin, it, that was quite beautiful. But if you can imagine as well, when we had a hurricane, that water actually crissed all the way up, um- But if you can imagine as well, when we had a hurricane, that water actually crissed all the way up, um, what is that, 30, 40, 50 feet? And so, um, there's only so much we can do to tame. But the answer is, um, we have in place and have had discussions with all of you as well, that as we're approaching a billion dollars' worth of defined projects, council is going to be asked increasingly to, um, help prioritize those based upon the work of Alicia and, and Dr. Jones and others, um, to come up with those fundable projects and to issue bonds, because that's really going to be the only way. And then, if you said, if the federal government comes in with money, we'll definitely use it. But with a billion dollars worth of identified projects, I think it's, it's not that much money in DC that's free for Fabio.
Thank you, Dr. Hewitt. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, prepare to make a motion when it's appropriate.
Uh, all right. Council, any other questions, comments? And, uh, this is just to receive your report. Oh, okay. Well, did you catch the first half of this?
Oh, you guys already passed.
No, go ahead.
Mayor Coleman, I just moved that the council provide consensus to approve Cross Creek channel geometry improvements, preliminary design project to advance to a 15% design.
All right. Most of my Councilman Benevente, there's second. Second, my Councilmember Thompson, discussion. All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes. What I, the part I was speaking particularly about, and I think which they would appreciate knowing, if this is approved, if it passes, they want to know what our expectations are, whether it's going to be more amenity-based. Did you, did you need any kind of level specifics for that, or you're going to bring back options?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I think we'll bring options.
And that's within that 11-month timeframe? Because I don't want to get 11 months, and then we have to go back 31 months if we say we want a thing.
So, we have planned into our, our scope, I guess, coordination with city staff, and I think we can take a look and, and look at opportunities to include you all.
All right. Y'all voted already? All right. Uh, yeah. No, I thought it was already at 10. I was like, okay. All right, who we missing? All right. All right, most carries. All right, um, thank you all.
Thank you all.
Look forward to talking to you.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, moving forward, uh, 6.08, uh, 6.03, proposed loitering ordinance. Good evening, uh, afternoon, rather. Hope it's not evening when we start, finish this up.
I was getting ready to say good evening too, so it's okay.
Good afternoon, council members. Um, I am Attorney Randolph, Assistant City Attorney with the City Attorney's Office. And today, I am going to present to you, you all, our proposed loitering ordinance. So, we have an existing ordinance, um, that is 17-22. It is limited in scope in that it is more focused on our drug-related loitering. So, that combined, the limitations with that combined with recent incidents that have happened in our downtown parking decks have led to increased crime risk, uh, property damage, some liability concerns, and just an inadequate law enforcement tools. And so, right here, you can see that we have compared our court, our current ordinance, which is 17-22, compared that with the proposed ordinance. And so, the current ordinance is narrow in scope, um, in that, again, it is focused mainly on drug-related use. It is limited in that it is for public spaces only. Um, the gaps, there's some gaps in it. And so, the proposed ordinance does seek to fill a gap, um, in particular with parking facilities and school grounds, mainly with the focus being on parking facilities. The penalties are the same for both the current ordinance and the proposed ordinance, in that they both come with a class-three misdemeanor, um, with a fine not to exceed $500. However, the proposed ordinance, uh, does come with, um, depending upon the court's discretion, community service can be imposed in place of that misdemeanor or that fine. And so, again, the proposed ordinance is to fill a gap and to provide law enforcement with another tool. So, again, some key additions of the proposed ordinance. Again, the focus is on the city parking facility protections. It does, um, also have a focus on school grounds and transportation facility coverage. There are some constitutional protections that are embedded in the ordinance. And it does have a warning requirement, um, that the current ordinance does not. And there are some clear enforcement procedures. So, how does our proposed ordinance compare to some existing ordinances or laws that we have on the books? So, right here, you see three, or actually two. So, the proposed ordinance is at the end. The first two in the chart are, are disorderly conduct, and then are nuisance party conduct. So, how does it compare to what we already have? So, if you just look at the behavior, so I'm going to look on the left-hand side here, and we're going to consider behavior, intent, location, the penalty level, um, warning required, and the enforcement approach. So, if we're just considering disorderly conduct and we're looking at the behavior, so disorderly conduct, you're looking at something that is threatening, fighting, or disruptive. If we are looking at our nuisance pardon, party ordinance, we're thinking about the behavior required there as something that is excessive noise, a large gathering, property damage. And our proposed ordinance, um, in comparison to those, is that it is passive remaining without a legitimate purpose, with legitimate purpose being the behavior or the connection that law enforcement would make there. If we're considering intent, we're looking at for disorderly conduct, again, something that's disruptive or threatening behavior. Nuisance, we're looking at loud, disruptive gatherings or parties. And with our proposed ordinance, we are looking at unauthorized presence in specific facilities. In terms of location, uh, we are looking at for disorderly conduct, we are considering your, the location is, is focused mainly on generally public places. And you see P and R there in parentheses, that is Parks and Rec. So, if you actually go and search, it's in chapter 18. I'm sorry, I apologize, I can't recall the exact, um, section in chapter 18. But our disorderly conduct that we do have on the books right now, um, is actually for Parks and Rec. Uh, our nuisance party ordinance that was just enacted recently, that one focuses on private residences. And again, our proposed ordinance is focusing on city parking facilities, but can also be applied to the general public and to commercial private places as well. The penalty level for the three, um, disorderly conduct and the proposed ordinance both come with a class-three misdemeanor violation. However, again, the proposed ordinance can come with, um, in lieu of that community service, or it could be in conjunction with that misdemeanor. And then with our nuisance party ordinance, we have, um, progressive fines. And so, you'll also notice from the chart that for disorderly conduct in our nuisance party ordinance, there is no warning that is required for, uh, each of those, uh, for both of those. However, our proposed ordinance, um, we have embedded a, a warning requirement before any citation is actually issued. Um, and again, for the enforcement approach, um, disorderly conduct is more of a reactive, and that is after the disruption has occurred. The nuisance party is more of a progressive type of approach, whereas warnings and then increasing penalties. The proposed ordinance is more of a preventative ordinance, um, before a problem escalates to where it is something where it is disruption or frightening, um, fighting or threatening behavior. So, what are the benefits of the recommended solution or the proposed ordinance? And so, you'll see three figures here, three, um, pictures here. So, this is public safety. You have a, a justice, the, uh, the justice protections that are embedded into the proposed ordinance. And then, um, we always want to know what's the bottom line, what's the dollar figure, right? So, if we're looking at public safety, um, there are clear guidelines for legitimate facility use. The proposed ordinance also, um, again, it is just another tool for our law enforcement to use that fills a gap. It is to reduce crime and liability risk. We have embedded constitutional protections, um, that are exceptions, that are noted as exceptions within the ordinance, um, with clear definitions and prohibited activities, um, with a uniform standard across, um, the board. And the expectation is that this will have significant cost savings in terms of reduced property damage and maintenance. So, what are some of the constitutional safeguards? So, really, there is, um, the first one being that there is a warning that is required before any citation. That is Section 4.8, um, the First Amendment protected.
Madam Attorney, this is not in our cam. So, I've been trying to squinch and read it, but...
It's printed for you. I'm sorry.
Got you. All right. All right, sorry for the interruption.
You're fine. I give you all some time to catch up. I apologize that I did not mention that it was on your desk. So, again, there are some constitutional safeguards, um, and a warning is required before any citation is to be issued. That, again, that is something that our court ordinance does not have. It does also have First Amendment protections. Um, again, these are listed out as exceptions in Section 3 of the proposed ordinance. Um, and then also, it requires a probable cause standard. And so, um, that probable cause standard, again, is something that where a reasonable person would, um, a reasonable person standard.
Can I ask a question about that part, just in particular, before we lose it?
Yeah.
Mayor Coleman, if you don't mind.
Sure.
In this case, the probable cause would be simply existing somewhere, though.
No, it, therefore, a legitimate purpose. So, it's the legitimate purpose connection, and it is the connection of the behavior, not the status.
Well, when you say the behavior, I thought you said that this was before the behavior is conducted. A moment ago, you said...
So, I, I think probably what you're referencing is that it is a preventative versus the other ordinance being reactive.
So, in, and can you give me an example of what probable cause would be in this moment? Because if I am in the parking deck and a law enforcement officer approaches me, what is he trying to determine to say more likely than not, I'm violating this ordinance?
So, it's not merely for you just existing or being in the parking deck, right? Yeah, so it's not just for merely being or existing or being in the parking deck. Again, it's connecting the behavior to a legitimate purpose in the parking deck. So, for instance, if you are there with friends, um, and you all are drinking, and you're having an unauthorized party.
So, wouldn't, um, alcohol being open container consumption outside of an appropriate place already be a tool in the police toolbox? What would be the purpose of this? Because I think my biggest concern, just like, in all honesty, the curfew, is that the police have a lot of tools for the moment that someone actually breaks the law. And now, we're saying we're going to create a new law to move that goalpost even closer to, um, people simply existing and sort of before they actually engage in antisocial behavior. The onus is now on that person to prove their innocence, um, especially with these supposed First Amendment protections. I mean, are you saying that if a officer doesn't believe that you are indeed exercising your First Amendment right, the only opportunity that a citizen would have to prove that is after they're charged, after they have to go to court, and after they've cleared the first appearance, have to potentially get an attorney? I don't think that you have articulated at all sort of the real burden that ends up happening to actual people if we do this. I think you've kind of glossed over a lot. So, when you say probable cause, could you share a little bit more, an example of probable cause that does not invoke another sort of crime, like alcohol outside of an authorized place of consumption?
Madam Attorney?
Yeah, if I may, sir, and Councilmember Benevente, with all due respect, you know how I feel about the hypotheticals.
Well, I was asking her to give one.
Right, but you did ask for one, and then she gave you one, and that one...
A bad one.
Right, and so then that wasn't good enough, and now you're asking for another one. So, if we may, if we could just, um, allow her to finish the presentation, but the hypotheticals, we could be here all day with the hypotheticals. The purpose of the ordinance is to give the officers a tool all of the time. We may not need to use it, but this is specific, as she said, to our parking decks where we have issues now.
How do you establish probable cause?
The officers are already trained to do that. This is not a new concept for our police department, and they would be the ones enforcing it. So, it's going to be a case-by-case situation.
Can we ask Chief Bryan to maybe articulate that?
Well, Councilmember Benevente, we, we got other questions. I, I really want her, you've got another question from Mayor Protem. We'll circle back. I know, I know that you all are trying to interpret the legalities of it. But, you know, right now, this is a presentation, and then, once we get into the debate of whether we, and how we institute the policy, I think we can circle back to some of that. All right, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, my question is, um, the warning required before any citation. So, I'm, you go, what, the police officer goes up to the top floor of, let's say, the parking lot, and there's kids there. They're just taking pictures. You see no drinking going on. And at one time, we had a problem with the children getting on top of the parking deck and taking pictures. And, you know, if something went wrong, they fell off. You could see it all over Instagram. My question is, for now, having to have the warning, the police officer goes up there and sees them and says, you know, you're, you're surrounding here, you're loitering, you need to get in your cars and go. Does he watch to see them go, or does he just, and I'm, I'm just asking the question. So, let's say he warns them and he leaves, and he comes back, does he come back another hour? Or he or she come back another hour? Or is it that person that got warned has to be warned one time before? So, if they do it one time, and they catch them back up there, you know, three weeks later, and it's a different person, but the same group, am I making any type of sense of what?
No, you are. No, you are. Um, I was going to say...
And it's just for knowledge. That's it.
Um, I was going to say that really the answer to your question, and really maybe to Councilmember Benevente's, is that this, these are things that would be worked out. So, later on in the slide, in the presentation, there's a slide about recommendations and next steps. And so, these are the things that when we're talking about meeting with OCS, meeting with, um, Brooks Team, like on homelessness, and meeting with the police department and the other community partners that we want to, that we work those things out, and that it would require some training.
So, one more just quick question. I know that we're talking about public places, but also, when we were talking about, I saw that there had to be a warning for private too, for like parties and things like that. Did I read that correctly on the slide?
So, no, I think the one that you saw, and I can try to go back to that one. So, it's not, it was really for, supposed to be for commercial private places. So, really, the focus is like on a business. So, if there is, right now, we don't have anything for businesses, either downtown or just in general across the city.
So, if there's a business and it's closed at night, and there's people congregating in their parking lot, that, the police go and they say, you, you need to get off the property, because they have, there are no trespassing, they get a warning.
Right.
Is the way I'm understanding this.
Yes.
Then my question is, if the police officer drives back again an hour later, that's when he can give the citation?
Yes, he could. Yes.
Okay, but he doesn't have to...
He doesn't have to do it in that instance, is what you're saying.
Yeah.
So, it, it can be either way, and I think, again, that that is something that would be worked out with the police department, is which, which method or which process is more, I don't want to say beneficial, but which process would be the most efficient process? Is it to, again, do it right there in that moment, or is it to come back later and to come back around? Or if you see the, an area, one of the other things that we propose with this ordinance is to kind of, um, track and to make sure that we're looking at things periodically. So, maybe there are hotspots across the city that we see that certain things are happening. So, maybe that will require them to come back around after an hour. So, I think it, it depends, is what the answer really is.
Okay, okay. Thank you. You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, Madam Attorney. Um, so, I'm going to ask you some questions as... Um, so I'm going to ask you some questions, as probably, uh, I won't say a hypothetical because I know the attorney doesn't like that, but, but they are rhetorical.
Okay.
For sure. Alright, a parking deck is for?
Park, is for parking, yes.
Alright, now this ordinance says that this should be, uh, does not include people who are there to park or go to and from their vehicles. It says, um, it should be unlawful for any person to assemble, um, with one or more persons in a city-owned parking deck, except for the purpose of parking. That's what parking decks are used for typically, removing the vehicle or going to and from it, and it gives provisions for that. Um, schools, typically, you're there for some activity or purpose, I think, which is where this separates that and puts this into a reasonable application by law enforcement. I think what we're doing is saying these are, uh, some options to use, but certainly law enforcement has the ability to determine whether someone is in a city-owned, tax-paid for parking deck for purposes other than parking, even though they may not be breaking the law by skateboarding, but they're not there to park a car. So you need some clarification on that, because right now, our current ordinance doesn't address that, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So a, as we look at it, Council, I don't think, I think we could probably find a scenario where there could be wild interpretations of either, either option. But if our parking deck, that we spend tens of millions of dollars we're building, is for parking and not skateboarding or partying or camping out, I think we should reasonably think that, given the, the rules, like I just read, you know, my law degree's in the mail, but they certainly, we, I trust the professionals to be able to apply it when necessary. But I think, I think that is what, I want to make sure that our role is policy and budget versus interpretation or litigation. But Councilmember Benevente?
Mayor Colvin, but I guess this is not just about the parking deck either, right? This law would apply to everything, everywhere, all the time.
No, it's got sections.
Well, no, the, the, I love sections, I love every section except the general section that tries to be too much of an overly broad catch-all. Don't be.
Well, you just used the example of the parking deck.
No, no, sir, you were talking about the parking deck as being where it's parked.
Well, you asked her about the parking deck.
Right, uh, because that was, again, just, just, we can use anywhere, though, right? If, if it's at a school, you shouldn't be doing those bad things, you shouldn't be skateboarding on places that are not meant for skateboarding. But the, the real issue is the action that you took, the skateboarding, right? Like, uh, my concern is, is with the overly general aspect, and again, how that gets practically enforced. If you are, like the previous ordinance said, on the corner selling drugs, yeah, that's against the law, don't do that. Um, you know, loitering in the parking facilities, drug-related activity, being on school grounds when you're not a student, all these make sense. The real concern I have is section A, general loitering prohibited. So now you have this sort of catch-all that puts the onus on a person to prove.
I, if, if you are creating a danger and breaching the peace.
Right.
Would you agree that creating a danger and breaching the peace in any space is not a good thing?
Not necessarily, right? Because it's, who's, who's to say? I think that that is, is what.
Well, we're not talking about the interpretation, all we're determined is the rules, we're not, we're not passing any ordinance, or, or, I don't think we're being considered to say how you interpret our ordinance. But what I'm saying is, these examples given, it didn't just catch all like you explained it, it said, if you're there to create a danger of breach of peace, cause disturbance or annoyance, uh, obstruct pedestrians or vehicles, molest, interfere, or lawfully in any public place, and interfere, impede, entrance, or exit.
So I think that we have to think about what happens after this, right? So we have to think about actual practical application, are law enforcement going to be expected to do, you know, more to satisfy these requirements? My feeling is that we have to always think about the second, third order effects, and whether it clogs up the courthouse, and whether it creates, you know, less time for addressing real issues, that we're kind of policing things that aren't yet issues. That, that is my only general concern with this ordinance. I think section D, C, D, E, F, G are great, but there is a huge concern for me that we're being overly broad in our general loitering prohibitions, because it's always going to end up falling on the citizen to have to prove their innocence after they've been charged. That's just the reality of it. And I just want us to be careful with that in mind, because the original ordinance, I thought, very effectively addressed what we wanted to worry about. People standing on the corner, probably got something they're not supposed to have, neighborhood pharmacist or a street pharmacist, whatever you want to call it. Um, let's, let's add a few more things when it comes to the parking deck. Section A, to me, is, um, it's, 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 it's very general, it's very overly broad, and that's my concern.
Alright, thanks, sir. Uh, Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm ready to make a motion, if there's no other questions.
Okay, alright, we'll entertain, sir.
I move that we adopt the comprehensive citywide loitering ordinance as recommended.
Can we finish the presentation?
They don't care what it says, they know what they're doing.
Did you have other sections?
The out is not finished, but, um, I'll work at you all's pleasure, so whatever you all would like for me to do.
Oh, yeah, no, well, well, we got, you know, on a, on a rabbit trail, right?
This is just.
No, I mean, but we didn't allow her to finish it, so, so certainly we want you to finish it, Madam Attorney.
Yeah, yeah. Please, please finish.
So, uh, we'll, we'll, there was a motion in a proper second, we'll, we'll save it there and pick it back up after the presentation.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah.
So as I mentioned before, um, it, again, it will require implementation, and so that will require training and procedures, um, to, again, partner, um, to train, um, work with the police department in terms of how to distinguish between problematic behavior versus status, um, and emphasize that a warning is required before any type of enforcement or citation is issued. Um, again, it will require community partnerships, such as coordinating with Cool Spring and any other downtown associations, and also partnering with our Office of Community Safety and our City Homeless Task Force. Um, and again, a regular review of enforcement patterns, just to ensure that, um, vulnerable populations are, um, are not being targeted, and to make sure that there aren't any hotspots across the city. And so again, any next steps, um, again, so discussions of text amendments, um, council adoption of the ordinance, um, so in, one caveat is that we can't adopt at the introduction, and so this would be the introduction, um, of the ordinance, so it will require a second, um, a second time to come before you all. Um, and then it will require staff training on the new regulation and public notification with a suggestion of a 30-day grace period, and then signage, um, possible signage, or signage, um, in the parking facilities is highly suggested, um, to, uh, put the public on notice. And that's it.
Alright, well, we do have a motion on the floor, we, it's been moved by Councilwoman Thompson, it was seconded by Councilmember Hare. Alright, discussion. Councilmember Benevente.
I think when, um, the slide claims significant cost savings to reduce property damage, I think, um, at some point, y'all should really quantify that, um, to say whether or not this is effectively benefiting the city, or if in fact it's just another, uh, example of us overpolicing, um, and spending more money than we ought to, uh, in ways that we can accomplish these goals much more effectively. If, um, we change the way that the barriers are to get to the top floor, so, you know, people aren't loitering up there, I think that's much more cost-effective than hoping to sort of catch people, and then when we do, putting sort of the cost burden back on the court system, the taxes that, then the cost of judges and lawyers and all these things. We're not really thinking about the second and third order effects and the true cost of the community when our tool after tool after tool is just more and more hammers. Um, and so I'm really looking forward to y'all, um, justifying, again, this, this sort of constant refrain, this constant approach of just more and more, which is moving the goalpost up to where you can't be, you know, out past a certain time, you can't be anywhere in this city after this ordinance, um, without potential for law enforcement to make you prove that you indeed are allowed to do anything here in the city of Fayetteville. But I understand that that's sort of, um, you know, where we're at as a city council right now.
Do you have a?
I think it was more commentary than, did you have a question? Yeah, but I mean, did you have, yeah. Uh, um, you know, thank you, Councilmember Benevente. Um, you know, I think our first order business and responsibility is public safety, and I do, um, and don't feel that, uh, citizens who, who, I believe our citizens have the right, as this ordinance says, as I read it again for the, for the minutes, um, this only applies, um, when they're, um, when folks are causing or creating dangers of breach of peace, uh, disturbance of comfort, uh, preventing free passage of people and vehicles, I think our citizens have a right to do that, uh, molesting, obstructing interference in public places, I certainly support not being able to do that, and to interfere, impede with normal interests of exits of any business premise. Uh, I believe that our businesses, uh, have the right to have, uh, operations without having those things. I do trust, the same way that we've got hundreds, if not thousands, of laws on the books, that the probable cause standard that is going to be required, just to make, under this page that says constitutional safeguards, that, uh, our, our professional law enforcement people who will have to conduct this are professionally trained to do it and not overapply it, but I think that society has to have rules, we can't just wait on it to fix itself.
No, but there are ways to fix it without relying on law enforcement.
But you had your opportunity, that's, that's my perspective, so we all are tied up to one, you, you made your point, so I didn't interrupt.
I apologize, sir.
Okay, well, alright. So, um, with that, I'll be supporting the motion for those purposes, but I do trust the fact that, um, that as we bring, uh, some structure to these things that were mentioned, um, that, um, that our law enforcement men and women and, and will understand the spirit of this is not to impede on anyone's constitutional freedoms, so.
I trust that you guys are also going to try to come to actually get your points.
Alright, separate and apart from, yeah, alright, call for question, alright. Counsel, look to you for your vote. Oh, you voted for it. Alright, motion carries. Thank you, alright, we'll move to the next item. Um, thank you, Madam Attorney, good job, Madam Attorney.
Good job.
Mr. Gibson, you just now getting here?
Well, sir.
I'll tell you the truth. We just leave your votes in affirmative, I got a couple of good motions for it.
I'm sure.
Alright, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I just asked to be excused.
Oh, you can't make it, can, can someone?
Oh, I know, I was just asking to be excused, uh, DSS Court has been calling me, and I've got to return to the Cumberland County Courthouse.
Can, can, counsel, can someone make a vote to excuse Councilmember Benevente?
I move that we excuse Councilmember Benevente for the.
Is there a, is there a second? Second by Councilmember McNair. Alright, counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. I think I'm going to vote against this one. Go ahead. Alright, motion carries, have a good day, sir.
Okay, uh, counsel, thank y'all, um, glad to see you back.
You done dug this up from somewhere.
No, that's in the master plan that y'all adopted.
When, 2005? Go ahead.
What you have in front of you, I just passed out, um, is a priority list, just wanted to give you a little heads up on the front end, um, just a, a quick little reference, um, that, uh, you can go and look in your master plan and see where our priorities are based on the parks, based on youth, and based on the adults. What you have here is an update, um, for the, uh.
Question, mayor, before Mr. Gibson even begins.
Yes, sir.
As I look through your list, Mr. Gibson, it's several, it's several items, it's a couple of items I do not see here as an updated report, and every time you come to the diocese, I bring them up. So do I need to bring them up, or do you have a surprise for me?
No, sir, as I move through the process.
If I can, um, we're going to ask you a question, yes, sir, we'll get them. And Michael, and we did not have a general update on the other projects at this meeting, but we'll have one at an upcoming meeting where we'll give an update on Glenville Lake, we'll also give one on, uh, the tennis center, we'll give one on all the other parts, all it, well, there's no update on MLK beyond what, but we'll be happy to talk about that one as well.
But, but, and I do appreciate that, and, and I'm going to, I'm adhering to whatever you, you say to both of you, but, um, if you were coming today to give a report on parks and recreation, and you already know that this is something that is very dear to the citizens' heart, so that makes it even more dear to my heart, uh, it should have already been here. I, 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 I understand, but in the most humble way that I could say, if you're going to give a Parks and Rec update, and the items that have moved forward as a priority item, they should always be a part of the Parks and Recreation's update and not brought to, to us later.
Yes, sir.
You may proceed.
Well, and, and to clarify.
And my face was smiling.
Well, it was, and, and I, and I appreciate that, and appreciate the passion that the council has for this. Uh, this item, like the other item on Stormwater, um, that we looked at on the downtown plan, is really, um, staff's, um, desire to meet council's interest, which is to keep those things which are most important in front of you. Uh, we would have had and did have programmed today for an update on those other projects, but it was not as comprehensive as we wanted, and so we didn't want to bring you something halfway. And because, again, we understand that it's of importance to you and the community as well. Um, the title on this one, on the slide in front of you is somewhat, um, misleading. Um, it's Parks Recreation, but it really should be Master Plan Addition, Modification, or Update. Um, I'm going to ask Michael just to take 30 seconds and talk about the Parks Recreation Master Plan, why we do it, how often it is, and how it guides our CIP, how it should guide, um, Glenville Lake, how it should guide Splash Path, how it should guide Parks Recreation Centers, um, and a new amendment. So if you can just hit that real quickly, and then come back to me if you can, real quick.
Yes, sir, and, and this, uh, master plans are done every 10 years. Uh, this is a county-wide master plan, um, to include Spring Lake in the time that we did it, um, that shows what the citizens are, are, that's important to them from a recreational standpoint, um, from a leisure standpoint, and how they enjoy their community. Um, it's just a, a document, and that's why I wanted to make sure that you had the document in front of you that shows the top priorities based on, um, age categories and what's important to Parks and Recreation itself.
And Michael, and so today we were, um, many councilmembers and I had the same pleasure of being out on the, um, Linear Trail, and the Harry Shaw, um, uh, all the work that he did. And I can't recall now if that was a 10 or 15 or 20-year plan.
20.
20-year plan. And the guy, the reason that you do the master plans is because, number one, it allows you as a community to say what's important to you, um, and as Dr. Hare knows, for a long time, people felt that Murkison Road corridor and some other areas around the city, east of the river, and other places like that were neglected. And so this council, so that we're here, and 20 years from now, you're able to say that the work that you are doing now, the parties that you have live on beyond our time here, you has to, it stuff needs to go into a master plan, it needs to go into a master plan. And anytime we deviate from the master plan, whether we expand it, Mr. Mayor was talking about, and Mayor Protem, about a river walk, potentially a creek downtown, um, from earlier projects, those things need to be grounded and housed somewhere. Because what ends up happening is, we have a budget year where we don't get any money, or the federal government, as the mayor said, or maybe Councilmember Benevente says, we're no longer funding this, and so that gets stuck on the shelf somewhere, and no one looks at it again. But with the, with the master plan, it is something that when we bring you the budget, it is appropriate, we're talking about CIP, you should ask every time, as Dr. Hare does, where's my park? Where's my stuff east of the river? Where's my playground equipment? Where's my swimming pool? Where's my splash pads? Where, where's anything that's of importance? And if it's not in the master plan, then it doesn't allow Jody and Brooke and others to go out and get grant funding for it, it doesn't allow us to talk to foundations. Right now, we have about $3 million, we're still trying to unlock from a foundation, um, from, from an estate, um, that is money left for Parks Recreation type facility, that without a master plan, we have no hope of going after, but we do, because we have a master plan. So why are we here today if we're not talking about those other projects, which we will soon? We're here today because we have a unique opportunity that is too good for us to pass over, um, and it is, is Chris Colley here? I don't see.
No, sir, he's not.
Alex Baker is here. Um, and so, uh, one of the beautiful things about the partnership that Parks Recreation and community, economic community development have is that we get federal monies, those monies can be used for a variety of, of, of activities, including some type, sometimes capital of public facilities. And so we looked up, um, and the Mayor Protem and some of you others in here play tennis, are, are very familiar with tennis, uh, group, they were, um, quite concerned about the state of our tennis facilities around the city. And it's just one of those things where we have so many needs, deferred maintenance, that the tennis courts did not res- that the tennis courts did not resemble really the quality that we want for our Parks and Recreation facilities. I think it's the best way to say it, it's not for lack of us knowing what to do, it's just that money was so tight and variety, that's why we had to do $35 million in Parks Recreation Bond projects at once. And so we got to a point where we were saying that we're gonna do the tennis facility, and all of that's going well, and we'll be able to report on that for you as well. But we had tennis courts, I think six or eight, Michael?
Where?
I mean, Toke.
At Toke, there's six. It's on the board.
And so we asked, Chris Colley and Alex Baker said, is this something that we can use some public facilities money for? And they said, yes, we believe that is something, so that project is gonna be moving forward, and I'm still on Michael's thunder, he'll come back and catch that. So why are we here?
I got you.
Why are we here? We're here because we have a unique opportunity to not only resurface those courts using some federal monies, but we also have an opportunity to update your master plan to do something that you've all heard about, which is pickleball. And so that is really why we're here today, is to make sure that council has, I'm coming, Mayor, has an opportunity.
Huh?
It is, I think it's a great idea, and that's why we wanted to bring it to the council, to make sure that the council had an opportunity to tell us whether or not this is something you wanted us to pursue or not. Staff doesn't feel comfortable making those changes without direction from the governing board, since you and the county commissioners approved the Parks Recreation Master Plan.
If, if I can just, and, and thank you.
A long detailed explanation.
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Hewitt, for, for what you stated, and I do appreciate it. But just, just getting, just on this one or two points, and you were talking about budget, as far as the, the Glenview Lake project, just for example, and you, and you know the, the heartfelt of that from the community that is in the Merkison Road Corridor, the Seabrook Hills community and others, because it would be for the entire city. Are you saying then, with this update, that the Glenview, the Glenview Park project will be a part of the priority list?
No, sir, this is very limited today to say that when we're resurfacing Toke, we wanted to see council's appetite for, instead of resurfacing the tennis courts, to create a portion of those courts for pickleball. That was, that's very narrowly what we're here tonight to ask you, this afternoon, to ask you about.
All right, so, so Mr. Manager, if I could, did you have your last?
I did.
Okay, go ahead, I'll go after.
Okay, thank you. So, I would like everybody to look at the slide, can we put the slide up where it says where Toke Park is? Okay, so, we've talked about master plans, and we've talked about how we need to stay, stay the course and everything like that, and the Parks and Rec Bond, we had a course. Course changed, new people came, people left, course changed. And through that, we had a tennis community that could not play tennis. Now, they're getting ready to get a great tennis place, but we don't have a great place for pickleball. So, I, I got asked to go down there about four years ago. They had tape lines, they had courts that weren't the greatest, so we went in and we did it better.
Yes.
It's not great, but we did it better. People are traveling everywhere, we have a fantastic pickleball community.
Yes, we do.
They are from everywhere, and they are committed. I do not understand why we are keeping half of these tennis courts. And I live near Toke, and I've heard, there's tennis courts at Toke, there's tennis courts, they're using them. I live near there, I go by there, they're not using them. Now, if they're there when I'm not there, forgive me, but I've seen them, they're not using them. We have an opportunity right now, if we're gonna redo these courts, to put them all pickleball courts. They can have tournaments, there is the senior center right there, there is walking, they can walk around the track at Reed Ross. There is a lot going on in that area of Reed Ross. There is children playing, there is parents out there, there is grandparents out there. What a way to show our city to have a pickleball facility that, and we all know, pickleball people and tennis people get very, not so good with each other when it comes to court time. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, it is.
So, we are giving, I should say, the residents of the city of Fayetteville through the Parks and Rec Bond are building a magnificent tennis center.
It look good, too.
It does look good, and there is more tennis courts there than there are pickleball courts.
That's true.
So why are we not giving the pickleball community, the fastest growing sport in the nation, a complex, when alls we have to do is refurbish? I don't, I can't see it, because that will be six more courts, they will have 12 courts, correct?
Technically, they would, they would end up with 24.
24 courts, could you imagine the tournaments that we could have here and the economic development that we will bring into Fayetteville? Because they're traveling everywhere. Okay, I have my seat box.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protem. So, Mr. Gibson, I guess, Mr. Hewitt, the point, I want to go back to Councilmember Hares. If, if this was just a specific act to say, hey, we want to convert tennis courts into pickleball courts, I think that's a little more targeted, and we can see through that. But if we're updating the master plan, which is the guiding book for future investment in this space, top Parks and Rec items, Nature Trail and Greenway Trail space, that made the list, so what prohibits Greenville Lake access from being at least mentioned in the master plan? And I think that's what his issue is.
Well, one of the things, this was meant to be a slam dunk for council today, and it seems that we probably should do a presentation about the entire master plan, so that would benefit everyone. The Glenville Lake Connector was not part of the master plan.
Correct, correct.
Now, let me, let me stop.
No, Mayor, no, 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 Michael, thank you. And by, by saying, and so we advocated, it was amenities around the lake, and we, yes. Trails, we had trails. But the whole idea of the dock, the pier, and, and everything else.
Yes, sir.
So, Mayor, this is really because we have a unique opportunity using ECD's money.
Right, and I'm not, I'm trying to separate the two, so one is not caught up in it. But if, if, if ECD is on a timeline to convert these pickleball courts, whether it's half for all of the, whatever our, we, our pleasure is, I'd like to separate that action so that they can move forward. But if we're gonna redo the master plan, I don't want to have Hasley do it, and then every meeting, Councilmember Hares having to champion.
We're not, we're not advocating that y'all update the master plan, it was just recently done, what, 18 months ago?
Yes, sir.
So what's the ask here?
And, and, and Mr. Hewitt, and Dr. Hewitt and everybody, and I appreciate where you're coming from, so I'm with you with that. But I think the, the mayor is, was sort of, he sort of alluded and hit it a little bit. If it was, if it was gonna be an update on the pickleball courts and things along that line, it, maybe the, the title shouldn't been Updates on a Park and Recreation, it should have been something more...
Toke or something like that.
You know, centered in that area, because when I hear you say parks and update, I know what I'm thinking of, and what we just did over in Deep Creek Road, I know what you're thinking of.
So I wasn't finished, brother.
Oh, you wasn't finished?
No.
Okay, Mayor, you got to raise your hand.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, sir. Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. I stand down.
All right, but, but, I mean, I think we're saying the same thing, particularly when you, when you're talking about a priority investment rating as a nature trail. So I think we got that. Michael, my question for you, our demand for the pickleball, right? Given, let's see, for 12 courts or 24 courts, is that gonna have any impact on, based on usage, on, so now if we take the tennis completely from Toke, all tennis activity is centered at Mazarick and the new one?
Yes, sir.
And Mazarick is the one where we need to resurface the field, the courts?
Mazarick 1.
Mazarick 1.
Yes, sir.
And so therefore, if this is taken away, will the courts be resurfaced before we start this process? Because if not, and the, and the new complex is not ready, you know, I don't want to create compression, right? By, by, by doing that. All right, okay, so where is the prioritization of fixing those? Because it looks like to me you're gonna reduce the footprint of tennis players and constrain it all to the new complex.
Well, that's where, that's where I have the balance here, is that you would always have some tennis on the northern side of town. The, at the pace that construction management is bringing on the new facility over at Mazarick 3, the new tennis facility, we can sequence this to say, you know, the tennis center, then Mazarick, and then we can get to Toke, so we don't cut it out completely.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's all dependent on, the question is, is the council comfortable with either all or none?
All right, all right, I mean, I'm, I'm with some, okay, Councilmember McNair.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it possible to have one tennis court and one pickleball court?
We just redid the...
I know y'all did, I was thinking about that, I said, Lord have mercy, we done for.
Well, question to that point, is there gonna be, Mr. Manager, another meeting where we can update? So when we did the update for this Parks and Rec Master Plan, right, was it, was it more citizen survey updates? Or was this us just moving projects and updating those projects?
It, it was citizen, it was citizen, that's one of the reasons why. If you, if you pay attention to this, you can see pickleball is on there.
And I, and I don't want to go into the scope of it, because I think this is interesting enough that I think needs probably a dedicated item, right? I don't want to hold up ECD's timeline on this federal money.
Of course.
But I do think that there's enough interest, I was talking to Councilmember Thompson today about, and it kind of piggybacked off Councilmember McNair's thing about some of the additional amenities that the West would get, you know, if there's walking trail, you know, we don't, we don't really have a lot of specific, you know, we've done a lot with Lake Rim, and we've done a lot with the Bill Chris. But as we're doing this, I think the discussion, maybe, I don't want to get into it today.
I'm good with that.
But we need to make sure that, that we don't miss, you know, when we do it, that it's not only planning for where the needs are now, but where the needs are being down the line, so I think that's...
I appreciate that.
Yeah, so, all right, but council, if, Councilmember Thompson and Hodros, and then maybe see if y'all want to entertain a motion to at least free ECD up, see, Mr. Alex got his orange cross up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Davis, did you have a question that you wanted to address? Well, let me just ask more of a statement than a, than a question. I don't know if any of you guys remember this or not, but when I first campaigned, I campaigned about Reed Ross, about how Reed Ross can blow up the city of Fayetteville. As y'all know, I'm an ex-football official, and we had to go all the way to Raleigh to have our 1A all the way to 4A football tournaments. But if we just resurface Reed Ross Field and make it AstroTurf, we don't have to travel all the way to NC State, or have to travel all the way to Raleigh, or Chapel Hill. Those people can come to Fayetteville and have their 1A, 2A, 3A, or 4A football games. We've already redid the track.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Now, you're gonna do the, the tennis courts to pickleball courts. Now, if you can just do the field to AstroTurf, we will have three sports at one facility that have the parking and have the means of holding these national events. So, looking forward to that conversation.
Thank you, Councilmember Thompson, Councilmember Hodros, and then I'll come to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Dr. Hare, perhaps the, the heading should have been more specific. But I think many of us have expressed, and I think it just kind of highlights the importance of all of these master plans. I appreciate the fact that our Parks and Rec Master Plan is a 20-year plan. Everything should be updated every five years. And I appreciate that we update, you know, we kind of approve the CIP, you know, every year during budget, but perhaps at the next strategic planning, you know, we spend a whole, you know, maybe it needs to be a week, and maybe four hours needs to be on Parks and Rec, since this is something that all, or the majority of our residents are passionate about, which means by extension, we're passionate about it. So, we're not gonna solve it out here today, but I just think it, it kind of magnifies the importance of updating these, these master plans that are integral to everything that we do. Thanks.
All right, Councilman Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think what struck this whole conversation was the budget discussion around Splashpad at North Street, right? So I, I thought that we were gonna have a master plan, but this is not that. So, I remember you telling me there was different options other than a Splashpad, correct? That you guys could potentially put in the North Street area?
Water features.
Water features.
I mean, it's, it is, it, it all is Splashpad, it doesn't matter what it looks like, how it's designed, but our main objective is always to recircle, recirculate the water.
Right.
So whatever that is.
Okay, I was, I thought I was gonna see some different examples, because the community has been asking me, I said, I don't know exactly what may be over here, but it's gonna be some type of water feature, and I thought I was gonna see those different types of features.
Well, technically now, the council has not designated...
I know.
Okay.
I know, I got that part, but, I guess whenever that plan's going, can we, can we, can I see some different...
Don't you have a picture? You see this picture in there?
That's just a regular Splashpad, but there was a different type of water feature that they have, that they could possibly put over in that area. So I just want to see a little bit more, I guess, for the actual master plan, thank you, sir.
All right, Councilmember McNair.
Yeah, I, I just want to reiterate what you said earlier about the walking trail in Lake Rim Park. Were you speaking of that being a part of this master plan?
Well, it was, it was actually, you know, Councilmember Thompson and I were having a discussion before about how nice the dedication area was today.
Okay.
And we was just talking about how we need to expand the footprint of those kind of things to the West, right? Those are tax dollars being used over here, too, but they, they're not gonna drive 40 minutes across town to use the Harry Shaw Park extension regularly. So, it was just duplicating something like that over.
Okay, the reason why I asked is because it was mentioned to me that, that area was already funded to get the walking trail.
You, you are exactly right.
Yeah, it was already funded.
Yes, sir.
What's your problem?
Because y'all ain't letting me talk.
You been saying nothing, let's go. We got a motion on the floor.
I mean, that's, that's the reason I brought that question up, because...
That's Joker heard us talking about that. Talk.
There is, if, if you go back in your council minutes, there was an adoption for Glenville in the Downtown Trails Plan. So it's there, we voted on it, we can't walk away from it, so we have to do it. As far as Lake Rim, it's funded, the, the contract is already in, the guys are already sending bills, the same thing with Glenville Trail. No, 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 no. Not going across the lake. No, that's, that's not funded, from, from Mayor McDonough, what council approved. Okay, all right, all right.
All right, well, okay, but, but this is an update.
Exactly.
All right, so, ask Councilwoman McNair's question about Lake Rim, Hewitt.
Well, we have, we have the contract, they were out there, there's a preliminary site design, we're working with PWC because we have some of their, we have to go over some of their sewer pipes. We have a contractor, Bar &amp; Bar, with Glenville Lake, we have steward engineering. To go behind the botanical gardens, we have steward engineering. So all of these things are, are working in our Greenways Plan. One of the things we wanted to do today was, is just to have that conversation, because we had an opportunity for funding from a different organization to go ahead and make an update and give us a, a value add with Toke that we haven't had, because there is no pickleball on the northern side of town. So that was one of the things that the manager wanted to come and make sure that council was comfortable with us making this change. But everything else that we have said and done, we're living up to the letter of the law based on what council voted on and we're moving forward on.
So, question to that point, Mike, are those changes that you just mentioned a part of Parks and Recreation's master plan?
They're opportunities in Parks and Recreation's master plan.
Are they reflected anywhere in there?
Yes, they are.
Okay, so if we're gonna do that, it would probably be good to let us have everything. That way, when we're, when we're approving something, it already captures what he's worried about, what she's worried about, in addition to what you want to do specifically. I think that in itself would, would fix it. Okay, all right, so it sounds like we're getting on the same page, all right, Mayor Protem.
So, I'm gonna go back to what the ask is, is for the Toke Park.
It is.
So, what I will say is, I still believe that it all needs to be pickleball fields, and it needs to be a complex for pickleball. But if I can't have that, and we can't get six votes for it, I want to do a thing that we at least get something. These tennis courts have not been used. These tennis courts have not been used, there's not been, I don't think the last thing that was put in on from Tokay all the way up towards Ramsey Street, the, one of the biggest growing areas in Fayetteville, is the only thing, we haven't done anything except when the senior center burned down, which was what, five years ago, six years ago? We fixed that. So no new projects, no anything. So before we leave here today, we're talking about an area that has nothing from there up. We did get the pull, but that was back that other way. So, and this is in District Two. So my question is, can I, I'd like to ask for consensus to do all of it pickleball. And if that doesn't pass, at least get this moving because nothing's happening there, nothing's happened there, so it's time to give them some love.
All right, so we've got a motion, is there a second? All right, second by Councilman Thompson, now we've got discussions. So I'll go to Councilman Davis, I have a question, Councilman Hare has a question.
Do you guys track how many people use the court? Is there some sort of tracking system that you guys have?
We don't have where somebody might walk into the tennis court and it counts them, we don't have that.
I hear what you're saying, Mayor Protem, but we can't say no one uses it, right?
You can't use them because they're messed up.
But they're about to be repaid and redone.
So is it, so, okay, so, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, sir.
So my question is, are they not being used because they're not playable? Like we're hearing every day from Tokay? Now, I had no idea that tennis was as popular as it was until I started getting those emails about how bad those courts were, right? So are they not being used because they're not in the condition to be used?
That's a fair statement too, now, I mean, I think.
So we really can't say it's about capacity, it's about the usability.
Yeah, and I don't, I'm not completely against Mayor Protem's suggestion that we turn all of these into pickleball. My concern is, is that there is no tennis on the northern side of town after that. The closest place that we would have would be Pond Forest. So that's, I mean, but I'm comfortable, hold on now, I'm comfortable either way.
All right, so that, Councilman Davidson here.
No, I was going to say, I think people like options, and so I think it's best to have pickleball courts and the actual tennis courts, so I would not be in favor of this motion.
All right, Councilman Hare.
When you were talking about, Mayor Protem, when you were speaking of the not having pickleball courts, are you just talking about in that location of our city? The reason I asked that, because I was just saying with all the international courts that we getting ready to hopefully have a ribbon cutting on Filter Plant Drive, so I was just asking a question because I didn't quite understand what you just.
There is, there's only a few, there's nothing on that side of town.
Okay, that's all.
Nothing.
I was just wondering what were you meaning?
Councilman McNair, you had it?
Oh, he asked my question, and then also I received quite a bit of emails about the tennis court as well. So that's why I asked if we had the opportunity to have options, to have both. But however, if that's not possible, I'm good.
All right, well, I'll go, I see Councilman Thompson, so I just want, during the discussion phase, I support a phase-in conversion. I don't want to have the tennis community caught in the middle of taking these offline, Mazaric not being fixed, and the new tennis center not being ready. So I can support a phase-in, I can't support the full. So if I vote against it, I'll ask for a subsequent motion for the proposed one in a sequence that doesn't allow, you know, the.
A shutdown of everything.
A shutdown of everything, yeah. All right, Councilman Thompson.
I can agree to that, Mr. Mayor, as long as we get the tennis courts resurfaced at Mazaric Park before we shut down the ones at Reed Ross, I mean, that's understandable. I don't think we need to make a separate motion for that, we just make that part of this motion. But I just want everybody, well, we can always amend our motions. Let me just say that I think it's also necessary that we understand the financial impact that if we have a dedicated pickleball tournament area, it brings financial stability to our environment. You'll have the same thing at Filter Plant with the tennis courts. So you have two different places where you can have state and county tournaments that brings economic development here to the city of Fayetteville. I think it's only pertinent that we look at what we can do five, 10 years from now. I just remember Raleigh holding a pickleball event nationally that brought thousands of people to Raleigh, to a pickleball, and the gentleman that was on television said, it's going to get even bigger next year. Why can't we be the same thing? You got to have something dedicated to a certain sport in order for that to grow. Just like I just got finished talking about resurfacing the field for football. You have to have, you have to have the amenities around it. It will bring more businesses with restaurants, it'll bring more hotels for people to stay in. That's our economic impact for our community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Right, all right, I mean, agree completely, it's just if we take it offline, we need to have a replacement of the capacity. So Councilman Hondros, and then Mayor Protem.
We've thoroughly discussed the Parks and Rec master plan. I thought part of the plan was, once the Mazaric, the tennis complex at Mazaric III came online, that Tokay was going to be converted to a pickleball facility. Was that?
I think that's one of the proposals, but, you know, again, we didn't talk about taking these, how many courts is that that we'll lose?
Six tennis, three.
Twelve.
No, you would lose six tennis courts, the one, the picture to the left is existing.
So you lose six there, Mazaric One is not resurfaced yet, so all you would have is the bigger one. So I think the reason I injected that is because, you know, it needs to be in a phased-in approach. If you take these offline, you need to have some extra capacity somewhere.
No, I agree, I thought, I thought we were going to complete the tennis complex and those new courts and then do this conversion. Is that not what we're talking about?
That's exactly what we're going to be talking about.
So I'm going.
Go ahead.
So I'm following, so my question is.
Yes, ma'am.
If I called up the tennis community, because remember, they're the ones that called me that couldn't get, they got canceled by other communities because they refused to come here.
True.
They refused to come here, so if these courts are playable, they would have come here.
They wouldn't play on these courts because these are cushioned courts, these are not hard courts as they are now. If you were to go over to Tokay, these courts are designed for sort of a softer play. That's not asphalt there, that's a softer surface, so they would never go to this facility, which, when we turn them over, then they would go over there.
So what I'm hearing is, is that we do not have a city tennis league because we do not have courts. So my question is, so we don't, we don't have courts. If we tear these things up tomorrow, it's not going to change anything in the community because they're not being used. But my question that I'm hearing is, we're going to finish Mazaric.
Three.
Three.
Yes, ma'am.
Then we're going to.
Go down to One.
Go down to One, which is where.
Those are at Mazaric One, those are eight courts there.
So we're doing Mazaric III, Mazaric One, and then Tokay. This is two years down the road. This isn't going to happen in three months.
No, no, it's not going to happen in three.
So it's going to sit here like it is, and nobody's going to be playing on it.
Because it's not in the condition, right?
It's not in the condition, so it's just like, I mean, we can throw sand and do sand volleyball on it. So my question is, there's going to be, Mazaric III's going to have brand-new courts, Mazaric One's going to have brand-new courts, and then instead of putting 24 pickleball courts, and I don't know who's been with the pickleball people, but I'm going to send them to you from now on because that's what they want, and we have them at Massey Hill where you cannot, I don't even think they have a bathroom, do they?
No, ma'am, there's no outdoor bathroom.
There's no bathroom? We had to put shade out there, you walk on gravel to get there, there's no parking? The infrastructure is here. It is here to make it all work out, that people can come to our city right off of 295. They have the center there, they have everything they need, they have shopping, they have places to go eat. They're not hitting 295 and going back home, they're bringing all that to us. So when we say we can't take the tennis courts up, it doesn't matter, they're not using them.
All right, Councilman Bates McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor, I guess this is good conversation. I do know pickleball is a thing right now, because I was in Raleigh when they had their open ceremony. And it's big, but also at the same time, tennis is also huge here in the city. I walk just about every morning and see people at Lake Rim playing tennis each day. I think when we were talking about this, the survey was done, and it's about, you know, we have to think about it, what do the community want? If we continue to keep going back and forth and back and forth adding and subtracting, nothing is going to be able to get done, so I think we need to just go ahead, what we already currently have, let's go ahead and get that finished and then move to the next, to the next stage of adding other items. So I just wanted to just leave with that, but I think we need to go ahead and probably stick with what we have to get it implemented and done, because the more we continue to go back and forth adding and subtracting, the longer the community have to wait, and we've been waiting for some time.
Thank you, Councilman Bates McGlaughlin. So, Council, the only thing I wanted to point out, I fully understand putting this in a concentrated way for tourism, right, that you put all your, you know, Mazaric III together, you can host tennis tournaments. And you put, if you turned all these 24 courses into pickleball, you could host pickleball tournaments. Where do the actual taxpayers who pay for this stuff play, right? Because right now I have that with basketball, right? They, I get a lot of emails about, when is the gym open for just me and my cousins and classmates to go play because we've always got tournaments in them? So I agree, the tourism vision needs to be there, but you can't have a situation where we're saying our citizens are not able to play tennis and this can be tore up tomorrow and it not really matter because they're dilapidated and couldn't be used in a safe way. Mazaric One, dilapidated, can't be used in a safe way, nobody wants to play on it without getting hurt. So you can't fix one without the other. We're not fixing anything by bringing people off of 295 to the community for them to do it without having a place for the people who live here who pay for this stuff to have somewhere to play. So what is the, what is the plan for that if this is made into full pickleball? Where are the tennis players that live are going to be able to play? How many courts do we have at Mazaric III?
You're going to have 10 hard, four pickleball, you know, championship courts.
So this city of 300,000 people, metro area, county, is supposed to use 10 courts?
Well, you still going to have Mazaric One that'll have eight more.
That's not resurfaced yet?
Yes, sir, that's not resurfaced yet.
Okay, so we don't have that?
No, we don't.
So where are 300,000 people going to play tennis?
Well, in the city of Fayetteville, they would play on the courts that we have existing now, which is.
The unsurfaced courts?
No, they're surfaced, they just have cracks in them.
Oh, okay, so don't include those.
Okay.
Okay, so again, where are 200,000, whatever percentage of tennis players who live here, who paid his taxes here, going to play tennis? If the tournaments are held at Mazaric III and we have not fixed Mazaric One or have an alternative if we take these courts up? Where are the pickleball players who live here going to play? If everybody coming from Rocky Mount here, we appreciate that, and we appreciate the counties getting this hotel money and getting this food and beverage money, but where are the people who actually pay for this stuff going to play pickleball? Now, that's the question that I think we need to ask.
How many pickleball courts do we have right now?
We have eight at Roan, we have six at Massey Hill. Just wanted to think for here.
So Massey Hill, the ones without bathrooms?
Yes, sir.
Take that off the list.
No.
You can't play without a bathroom? Okay, well, shamefully, because we don't have anywhere else, so I mean. So, Council, this is a reasonable question.
I think that one of the things that, this is tremendous conversation, and I appreciate this, and this just tends to pull us back to how the community is growing and how Parks and Recreation needs to meet its needs. And everybody has legitimate responses to how we move forward. We just don't have all the money that we would need to do everything that we would want to do. So we make choices, and this is one of the things that I'm asking you to do now, is to give us direction on how you want us to move with this opportunity with ECD and the definite conversations here with the mayor and the Mayor Protem and how we move forward.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, let me just say, we have a time limit that we need to use that $3, $4 million from ECD. I think Mr. Gibson's been doing Parks and Rec for what, 30, 35 years?
I'd like a few more now.
I'm sorry, a little bit over 35 years. I know that he knows what's best for this community, he's been doing it for over 35 years. We just got finished looking at the great trail that he did this morning with his staff. I believe that revamping the Tokay, Reed Ross to pickleball is the way to go, Mr. Mayor.
I got you, well, Mr. Gibson, I didn't answer my question with where did the locals play?
Well, right, we have a school use agreement. They can, we use Terry Sanford, when people want to use it, we can use all the high school facilities. We have that agreement, so if somebody said, oh, we're going to do a tournament while the city's stuff is out of commission, then we would work it out with the school system to use their facilities. It's basically what we're doing now.
Right, so I'm not talking about tournaments, I'm talking about.
Just regular play.
What is the use of people, non-tournament related, I guess?
That's where they would go, now, once, now during the summertime when school's not out, we have, we can move like we want to. Once school comes back in, then you can't go on school campus until their stuff is over.
So again.
And hopefully by the time that happens, we'll have Mazaric III, the new tennis facility, up and going.
So will Mazaric III have certain things reserved for open play?
Oh, definitely.
So it will not be fully committed to a tournament at any point?
And I want to make sure now that everybody understand that.
Because right now that's what's happening in basketball.
The taxpayers are going to pay for it now.
Yeah, that's what's happening.
Well, it does happen in basketball. You right on that one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so this agenda item is asking for consensus for the use of ECD funds for the conversion of Tokay to pickleball, is that what we're talking about?
No, what we're asking for, we're going to use ECD funds, whether we do all tennis again, but it was an opportunity to come back and say, you have the ability to stay with what you have or go to pickleball and do half of the courts, which would be 12, and then three in tennis. The Mayor Protem is advocating for all pickleball. We're going to do something, it's going to get redone. It was just an opportunity to add value to the northern side of town by adding pickleball.
So with the addition of, how many courts is the new tennis complex at Mazaric III going to have? Just the new complex?
It'll have 10 hard courts, a championship, and four pickleball.
And then there's, how many courts of Mazaric One?
Eight, all tennis.
Do we need three additional courts at Tokay, is my question?
From a recreation director's standpoint, having people on the northern side of town to have tennis readily available, that's just what I look out for. And having pickleball, now I can say you have a facility that has both.
But how many pickleball courts are required for a tournament?
Well, I mean, the Mayor Protem has a point on that, if you're talking tournament, if you got 24, you become very appealing, because now you can host it at that site and people don't have to go anywhere, so that is, that's legitimate.
Because I think the frustration in a lot of the comments from us today is a bandwidth problem, we want all pickleball courts and all tennis courts, we just want them all finished by the end of the year. So it's not, you know, our frustrations, we're going to have to wait for two years to finish Mazaric One, Three One, and Tokay.
No, you're not, it's not going to take us two years to do that. We'll have Mazaric III done, which is a tennis complex, and as soon as that, you see that vision there, then we'll jump on Mazaric One and get that done, and then this will be the last thing that we do in that sequence of getting things done, and it's not going to take no two years now.
Okay, well. Thank you for all of that, I guess we got to call the question to the Mayor Protem's motion and second, and then I think we still need to have consensus on using the ECD funds once we're done with, once we dispose of that motion, thank you.
All right, so question's been called.
One more question, Mr. Mayor, if I may. Just like in anything, you have practice courts and you have tournament courts. Would that be the same thing when you have this pickleball court?
No, sir, everything that we would build would be to that grade of competition.
That's what I wanted to make sure, thank you, sir.
All right, Council, look to your votes, and Mayor Protem, is your motion, you want to repeat it?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we turn Tokay tennis courts in. Um, I move that we turn Toke tennis courts into fully pickleball courts after Mazerick Three and Mazerick One have been resurfaced.
All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes for that. Who are we missing? Councilmember McNair, what you doing? All right, all right, motion fails for the full conversion. Is there a subsequent motion for the staff recommended version?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we resurface the tennis courts at, um, Toke, that half of them are pickleball courts and the other half are tennis courts.
All right. Yeah, I'll put him, don't, you're not getting to that.
That's his wish.
All right. It's in the, it's in the packet, so, all right, so. All right, so there's a motion by Mayor Pro Tem, is there a second? Second by Councilmember here, discussion, we've had a lot of it. All right, Council, look to you for your, look to you for your votes. You better get the manager and get them, them things resurfaced. All right. We, we're missing somebody, who are we missing? Oh, Ben Avantela.
Mr. Mayor.
Now, one, one thing before we close, just to make sure that we're all on the same page. Whenever you come back with our update of the master plan for Parks and Recreation Centers or projects, that we will include- Our, our Parks and Rec projects, okay?
Hold on, yes, sir.
Clean trails, greenways.
Because like what we're saying here, we, it, we missed a lot.
And, and, and don't get me wrong, it's a lot.
Yes, sir, I know it is.
So we, so we just need, and I, and I appreciate the manager. Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a lot, so we'll come back and collective and make sure that everybody's interest is being met.
Okay, okay.
We could do that.
And when you come back, you're gonna come back with the budgets and everything that's-
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, definitely.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, Council, we're moving into, Councilmember-
Before we, uh, me, leave this item, there was a question about the timing. Uh, the, because we are using federal funds, we will have to likely move on this item, um, well before two years. And, um, because we have a, a timeframe to draw down those federal monies. And so we will bring you back a schedule for how we would envision the courts that we are resurfacing at Mazerick One, what we're doing at, um, Toke, and of course the completion of the tennis center at Mazerick Three, how all of those will play out so that we don't, we're not at risk of losing the federal fund. So you should see that, um, Adam and Michael at our, um, will have a dedic, try to have a dedicated slide that shows when the courts are up and when the courts will be down, um, so that we can thoughtfully use the federal monies.
And they're probably gonna do that work in the wintertime, right?
Well, it, um, that, you're, you're very correct, Mayor, um, uh, that because you are either pouring on concrete or asphalt and you have to let things cure, um, we may have to move on, um, Toke so that we're able to draw all of those funds down in an appropriate amount of time. But I did not want you to leave and think, the, the ones that we're playing up and down really are Mazerick One and Mazerick Three. Toke, because it is the federal money, will be, that has to float to, to use the money. Everything else will be floating so we have appropriate use.
All right.
Question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Manager, is there funding available to expand the courts at Toke to add additional pickleball?
How, how, um, uh, we can answer that question when we come back next time. The, the, there's, it's a lot easier to resurface than it is to build new. And, um, uh-
No, we're talking about pickleball, we're not talking about building.
Pickleball as well, I mean, but it, but it's the same concept, if you gotta pull a pad down and put down the courts.
So I have one last question. So what you just said was, we're not doing, because of the funding, we're not doing Mazerick Three first, Mazerick One second, and Toke third. So, so, but what we have just spent 30 minutes on is saying, Mazerick was Three, Mazerick was Three was first, Mazerick One was second, and Toke was third. So at the end of this conversation, I'm hearing Toke is first.
No, ma'am, we're, we're gonna finish the tennis center in October, um, uh, or sooner. Um, and that is, uh, that's Mazerick Three.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, what, the only thing I wanted to say about Toke is, because we're using federal funds, we have to be on their timeframe.
And, and what is that timeframe?
The timeframe is we need to expense that money before the end of this fiscal year.
So what I'm hearing is then Toke should be working. It should be starting work by the end of this year.
Yes, because you're using federal funds, there are additional-
I understand that.
Yes, ma'am, but-
So your point was, if that gets done by the end of the year, then at least we will have three. Yes, that changes the whole of what I was saying. So that's the part that I'm saying, if it's gonna be done by the end of the year, your point is valid because there will be tennis courts for somebody to play on.
Right, I just didn't want to not be anywhere for, right.
But the way they explained it, it wasn't gonna happen. Thank you.
All right, all right, we're clear? All right, so we're at the, uh, Councilmember request, we've got five minutes. Councilmember here, uh, it's on you, sir. And, and before you do that, just for some context, um, Mr., I guess it'd be Madam Attorney. Neighborhoods have a 25 mile per hour city ordinance wide typically, right? So Councilmember Harris, Adam is-
Mayor, I mean, I appreciate you trying to open it up, but I wish you would not have.
Well, I had to pay you back, raise your hand, sir.
My hand is up, man, thank you. Um, I've already been through all of this with staff and all, so I, I wasn't even gonna go through that-
Okay.
-in my presentation, that they've already brought things to me, and I understand the reasons why. But what my request is, uh, today, and I'm hoping, I would love to have a consensus for it today so that it can move forward to our consensus agenda for Monday, is to change all of Seabrook Road, which is a residential, residential area from intersection to intersection. There's nothing there but homes, schools, and churches. I would like to make a cons, have a, uh, uh, support vote that it goes to, all of it goes to 25 miles per hour. Presently on that street, from the curve of Langdon to Spalding is 35. And then from Spalding all the way down to Jasper is 25. Now, not trying to get up into reasons why and all of that, we, we, we got the last word on that. I would like to get the consensus vote to make it all 25 miles per hour.
All right, Councilmember Davis, is that a motion? Uh, yeah, so Councilmember Harris, motion to, uh, make it fully consistent all the way from Langdon to Jasper?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then a second by Councilmember Davis. All right, Councilmember Mahndros.
With, with 25 miles per hour signs posted like they normally do.
Yeah, all right, Councilman Mahndros.
Just questions for the attorney. Um, is it possible to have it on the agenda by the 11th, next Monday?
I think that's a question for the clerk, but, um, I believe we've already passed the deadline, but we can make it happen if council's, if it's council's pleasure.
Is it possible? That's a yes, okay.
Great answers. All right, thank you.
Question on the motion, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
It's my understanding that all neighborhoods within city limits, speed limit should be 25 miles per hour.
DJ told me not to talk about that.
Yeah, pl, please, y'all, please, y'all, leave this alone.
Leave it alone.
Please, y'all, let's just go ahead and vote, let this go.
I just, I just have, I just need clarity on one thing. I know you mentioned Langdon Street and the neighborhood.
I was just saying where the intersection was.
Oh, okay, I was just wondering, you're not, you're not, um, talking about Langdon changing, right?
No, no, I'm talking about Seabrook Road. I was just saying Langdon and Seabrook, because that's one beginning. And, and, uh, Jasper and Seabrook, that's the ending. That's all the reason I brought those up.
I think it need to be 15.
Get a speeding ticket for walking, Councilmember McNair. All right, so, all right, Council, take your vote. All right, who are we missing? Councilmember McNair, what you doing? All right, motion carries.
Thank you, Council, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Davis, tell me keep that same energy, huh?
Okay, uh, wait till this- All right, uh, so Council's the same, similar to, uh, Councilmember Harris. Um, you guys know where West Rowan Street, where the, um, skate park is? Um, a lot of people using that as a, um, way to get straight from Haymount to Black Boulevard and it's been a lot of speeding going on. So I rode, rode with a resident over there and I saw active speeding myself. So, um, similar ask, just to reduce the speed to 25 miles per hour and of course have all the signage that, um, is needed to make this happen, that's it.
All right, similar setup of housing and-
Yes, residential housing and walking ability and all that kind of stuff.
All right, so there's a motion by Councilmember Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second, second by, uh, Thompson, uh, okay, discussion. All right.
No discussion.
All right, let's vote then. What, what you talking about, Councilmember McNair?
Question, Mr. Mayor. Is this for Monday as well, Councilman? Is this request-
Thank you, Mr. Sir. Yeah, I would like for this to be on for Monday as well, if you can, thank you, so much.
All right, Councilmember McNair, you had a question? Okay, all right, Council, look to you for your votes.
Citizens appreciate it.
We're public safety council around here. All right, Councilmember McNair, we need your vote. It's 25, 15 mile per hour speed limit change. All right, motion carries. All right, Council, good job, motion adjourned?
Yep, yep, thank you, sir.